As they serve our, our people on a daily basis and give them what they need. And then finally, Lord, I pray for the residents of our community and just help us, Lord, help us to, to do the things that we need to do to step up and to serve our community, Lord. Whether it's the service or voting or whatever it would be, God, that we would, we would add to this, um, this place and, and help us, Lord, to, to be what we need to be. God, would you be in this city council meeting tonight and all of the decisions they have to make? Would you guide them? God, give them direction and wisdom and clarity, Lord, and the, on the things that, Lord, you want them to do and, and how to handle those decisions, Lord? Just hope it to go smoothly tonight. So we thank you. We love you and we thank you for this opportunity. In Jesus' name, amen.
Council next up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor. We do have one change in tonight's agenda. We have an executive session at the end of our meeting, but we want to make sure we do it the right way. And that is, uh, our, we're just doing a little bit alphabet shuffle. Instead of A, we're gonna go into executive session for item code seven four dash two oh six D. So that is the only change, uh, I move to adopt the agenda. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Have a motion second to adopt agenda submitted. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, sing found by saying I. Opposed nay. Guys have it and the agenda is adopted. Uh, next time up is the consent agenda. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Holden, I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest. Have a motion a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, sing found by saying I.
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 Opposed nay. Guys have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. So the next item up is public forum. Ms. Clark.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we just have one. Sally Reynolds.
Good evening, Sally.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm happy to see you all here tonight. And in the best spirit possible, I'm glad that Councilmember Stratter is not here and I hope that she has either had or will have a happy family occasion very soon. Oh, no, wait, wait, what am I looking at?
She's on the, she's on the.
Oh, you're there. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm still here, Sally.
Well, bless you, Councilmember Stratter, for being so dedicated to your city. Thank you so, so much.
You got it.
Second olden times, I forget, we have Zoom. Anyway, um, I just, you can raise your hand. I know I have not totally up to date on all of what the council is considering. So if this is already under consideration, just stop me. But with the growth of Meridian City, I would love to see our planning department expand a little bit. So if you would be willing to take into consideration an additional hire in the planning department and budget for that, I will watch when the budget comes up. I'd be happy to come testify that for our budget. I just think that with Meridian's growth and, um, everything that they need to do, that that could use some more budgeting. Yes, it's already under consideration? Oh, oh, okay. I thought it was. Um, I just, one of the things I'll just tell you, I was preparing my remarks tonight and I saw one of the things had been uploaded last night at ten thirty PM. And number one, no one should be doing their job at ten thirty PM at night. Um, and number, so it shows the dedication of our staff. And, and number two, it would just, to have everything there and everything complete would really give the residents and the council ample opportunity to review those. And I know that sometimes when public testimony comes up and it can maybe seem or come off as the public is, you know, complaining or not. But I think that if we can have that information, then we can really prepare factual remarks that can speak to the applications, having them in a timely manner. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Okay, with that, we will move on to our action items this evening. First item up is public hearing for proposed summer twenty twenty-three fee schedule of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department. We will open this public hearing with a brief statement from staff.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me tonight. Like, uh, Mr. Mayor just mentioned, these are the fees proposed for the summer activity guide. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Holden. Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, we have a, to meet noticing requirements, we're gonna have to continue this. So here it is open, the public hearing, and so we're gonna continue the public hearing, uh, to March twenty-eighth, so we can meet those noticing requirements. So I would move, Mr. Mayor, that we, uh, uh, continue the public hearing for proposed summer twenty twenty-three fee schedule and a resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-three seventy-seven to March twenty-eighth.
Have a motion a second to continue item seven to March twenty-eighth. Is there any discussion? You want to do them both at the same time? So the second agrees to also include item eight, which is resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-three seven seven two. Okay, is there further discussion? If not, all those in favor, sign by saying I.
I.
I. Opposed nay. The guys have it and we will continue it to next week. Next item up is item nine, a public hearing continued from February fourteen, twenty twenty-three for, uh, Sagara H twenty-two, H twenty-two dash zero zero two seven. We will continue this public hearing with comments from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Well, since the last hearing, the applicant has submitted revised plans. Um, a preliminary plot, a landscape plan, open space exhibit, site amenity plan, parking diagram, setback diagram, and concept elevations for the single-family residential units to address items of discussion from the previous hearing. And I'll just go through those real quick. Um, and just a side note, I did put in a, um, copy of the approved concept plan that's included in the development agreement for this, um, project for the future development area, the future residential development. Um, it's hard to see, but it did show some, um, very light, light, uh, lot lines on these. But anyway, just wanted to include that for review if you're interested. And this is a copy of the previous preliminary plat. This is the revised plan. And I'm just gonna run through them quickly. I imagine the applicant has a, um, presentation that they'll go into more detail, uh, with you on the changes. Uh, this is a landscape plan. Proposed reductions to the R eight setbacks. Uh, staff did prepare a table. That you received in an email and is also, um, here before you. And I can scroll back to that when we're, we're done here. The, um, common open space exhibit. Site amenity exhibit. Yeah, parking diagram. New concept elevations for the single-family homes. And I can go back to any of those at any time if you'd like to review them in more detail. And I'll just go through the changes to the plans. Um, the changes include two common lots that have been added. Three building lots, or excuse me, three buildings with nine multifamily, uh, units have been removed. And two single-family attached units have been added for an overall reduction of seven units, resulting in a decrease in density from eight point three five to seven point nine five units per acre. Removal of on-street parking where the, uh, road curves. And updated elevations for the single-family homes that represented better architectural quality. The reduction of units, um, increased the qualified open space by point one one of an acre. With the reduction of seven units and reconfiguration of parking, a total of twenty-five extra off-street vehicle parking spaces are proposed. And with the removal of on-street parking spaces on the curves, a total of seventy-six on-street spaces are available. The updated setbacks, uh, diagram, uh, depicts the portions of buildings that are nearest the property line where reductions to setbacks are requested through the PUD application. And the standard R eight setbacks required by the UDC. Overall, the proposed project exceeds a minimum parking, open space, and site amenity standards and is consistent with the density as desired in the medium-density residential and mixed-use community future land use map designations. And with the minimum density required in the development agreement of six units per acre. In summary, staff is supportive of the proposed changes to the plan and overall planned unit development. The staff believes it is, uh, provides an opportunity for exemplary site development that allows for innovative design that meets the purpose and findings required for a planned unit development. As noted in the staff report, and the applicant is here to provide a more in-depth, um, narrative of the proposed changes and overall.
Thank you, Sonia. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Thank you, Sonia. That's, that summary is very helpful. Um, one quick question about the parking. Where's their parking? Parking that was removed from the curved public road? Was there additional parking added then to the other public portions? Uh, to the south and the east?
Um, the, the previous plan is Mayor's, uh, Mayor and Council, Councilwoman Pro. The previous plan is shown there on the left. The, uh, revised plan is on your right there. Uh, the parking that I noted that was removed was on the curves. I believe all the other parking remains the same that was shown on the plan previously.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have one more question.
Councilwoman Pro.
Um, somewhat significant changes in, uh, that were made, or did any of these changes cause, um, the conditions of approval to change in the staff report that would be of note for us to know this evening? I saw the recommendations made by the commission, but is there anything else that you want to point out to us?
Nothing else.
Specifically?
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thanks, Sonia. Um, I, you know, I recall we have a rule that we need all of the changes and materials in, I think it's at least two weeks before the hearing. I just want to make sure we received everything with an adequate amount of time for you to review and feel comfortable and for the public to review and feel comfortable. Um, this one feels like a little bit of a, little bit of a scramble. I'm amazed that you pulled it off. Getting all this information together and these setback tables, et cetera, but I just, I don't like feeling like we're rushing through something when it feels like it's respectful of everyone's time to have enough time to sort of review staff's analysis of the changes. So if you just want to comment on that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, Council. Um, admittedly, staff is a bit stretched these days, as you know. Um, being short-staffed and just the amount of applications in. The applicant did turn in, I believe, all of the, uh, revised plans, the fifteen days prior to the hearing as required. The one plan that I was waiting on was the, the one that you noted specifically that you would like to have, the comparison between the standard R eight, um, dimensional standards and what was proposed. Um, that was the plan we were waiting on. It came in Friday, um, afternoon. And it, it didn't quite detail what I know you were asking for. So that was the kind of mad scramble on staff's part before the hearing today to try to get that side by side for you. And, you know, we, we always like to have more time. Um, but I, I do feel confident that we're there on this project and that the applicant is complying and actually exceeding our, our minimum standards. So staff is okay with it if, if council and the public is okay with it. Having said that, the most time possible is always desired. Thank you for your patience on that. It is appreciated.
Mayor, council, if I may, just piggyback on some of Sonia's comments for you real quick. So I, I want to just let the, this body know that I actually did meet with the applicant on February twenty-seventh after the public hearing. And we went through a lot of these changes that you are seeing tonight. So although they didn't technically meet the revi, giving us the revised plans within that fifteen-day window, uh, we felt that what they were proposing was adequate for us to make a recommendation and share that with you this evening. Now, I know as part of that discussion with the applicant on the twenty-seventh, they were in, they had informed me that they were also going to meet with Sally to talk about some of these changes too. So I'm hoping that some of that has occurred and they can share that information with you tonight as well. But I just at least wanted to give you that background information that they, they are trying to meet what you asked them to do a month or so ago when you wanted to see the revision. So hopefully that adds to some of the discussion tonight.
Council, any additional questions or comments for staff? Okay, then I'll invite the applicant to please come forward.
Tony Sang, six five one eight North Fairborn Avenue. I represent Sagara in this application. So, um, if we can, we have the presentation. And I want to start off by talking about some of the details that we, we do have that slide. Um, I know that we had, we didn't have that slide, uh, count, uh, staff didn't have time to prepare that slide, but we prepared one also. Hopefully they, they should jive completely. Um, all the, all the forms that we did want to submit for our application, we did technic, we did get it done, done in time in fifteen days. The one slide that the, the staff so kindly did produce, we were planning on producing for you, so we'll, we can put them by side by side. So they should reflect the exact same counts. Couple of things I want to address before we go too far is parking. I think parking was a question, um, after our last council meeting, uh, Sally, Sally and I actually went down to ACHD. They had a, we were able, we were planning on speaking in front of them. And luckily, um, their head, head lead council was there. And I happened to know him through golf and pulled me aside. I said, hey, I don't see you on the docket. So we spoke to him about the parking on the curves. And I said, hey, we don't want this parking. We want to speak in front of ACHD to get the park removed. And he said, well, it's not our decision. It's a decision of the city. And both Sally and I were said, what? So I grabbed Sally. I said, Sally, come here. You gotta hear this, because if I tell you this, you're not gonna believe me. So he told me it's the city's decision, as long as the neighbors and the developers agree that there should be no parking. They're responsible for putting up the signs. And we said, well, what's the next? Well, Sally said, what's the next step? He says, look, we'll have someone reach out to you. Um, we'll give you the process of asking for them to be no parking and the ACHD will in fact put the signs up. So that was kind of a surprise to me. I, I always thought it was ACHD's decision. They informed us that it was the city's decision. So I stand a little confused. I don't know if it is the city's decision, whose decision it is, but the process has been started. Uh, Sally was there. She can hopefully testify to the fact that that's exactly what happened. But we don't want the parking there. We moved it from our, um, diagrams. Uh, we don't need the parking. All the street parking was extra anyways. We're self-parked. And the earlier question was, has the parking counts changed? And the ratios have gotten better because we removed some units. We did remove some parking stalls, but because of the number of units we removed, the parking ratios got better. So we actually created more parking on a ratio basis, but we reduced the parking because we lost seven units. So I just want to make sure that's clear, is that ratios got better, actual parking counts went down. We're still overparked on-site and none of the parking on the street was a requirement anyways. And, um, that's, I wish that that process was done now, but it wasn't done yet. We're in the process of getting ACHD to put in no parking signs. And originally it was gonna be the two curves, but then during our meeting with Sally and the neighbors, um, they'd mentioned another director. They wanted the two spots taken out, so we removed those. Then I noticed on the north side, northeast side, there's another curve and we took those out also. Um, so hopefully that's settles some of the parking questions. Um, so just want to clear those two things up. Staff did a great job talking about what we changed. I know, I'm sure everyone was hoping for a bigger change. Um, went through our plans. We got rid of seven units. It was relayed to us that, hey, get the, get the density under eight. You guys are playing games, doing eight point three five. Let's get it right. And I know it's seven point nine and change, but we, we lost seven units, got it under, got it under eight. Um, we did meet with the, um, the neighborhoods again. Nick Grove, Director of the Meridian City Library, was kind enough to open the library to us. And serendipitously, he was there to answer some questions. It was kind of really cool format. We met at the library. We were able to present what we had and we didn't expect them to love it, because I, I know that everyone was probably hoping for a bigger change. This is all we can, I can't say all, this is all we can do on our pro forma. And this, this is what we can do. And we presented, neighbors were nice. And then they met on their own with Nick there. Nick was sucked into it and they were able to ask Nick some, you know, have his opinion. And he's obviously, you know, pretty nonpartisan. So he was able to answer a lot of their questions. We were involved in a portion of that meeting. The neighbors themselves spoke. Unfortunately, we had to cut the meeting short about an hour and a half, hour forty-five minutes. I had a previous engagement, engagement we had to run too. But we did present our new plan. We asked them, not for necessarily their support, we asked them to be agnostic. We asked them to say, look, we're trying our best. Um, I think we, we put our best foot forward. I, I, I really do like it. I know that it's not for everybody, like we said before, but let me go through some of the slides. So a lot of this is gonna be redundant, because I think staff did a good job in talking about reduce the density. We have the AC, ACHD solution for the parking. We updated some of those elevations that was my fault that we put in there that, as examples. Um, where, you know, a lot of this is taking a big step back at what we're trying to do. The site does have some limitations. I know we talked about the PUD process and why are we using the PUD? And I'll go through all the points. I think, um, Councilman, Councilwoman Strater asked, why are you using PUD? So we listed all the reasons why we're using it and we'll go through those slides. And this site does have one issue that makes it a little hard to develop, because on the south side, we did the irrigation ditch and there's a forty-foot easement. So as you can see, the shape of that, um, the shape of the parcel on the, on the west side is a little narrow. Now you take away forty feet from us, it gets really, really narrow. And then so for us to A, agree to do single-family homes as a board paramount, not agree, but comply. So we're doing the single-family homes. It leaves us so little space because of that forty-foot easement. Um, so that just caused some challenges. Um, part of the reason why we pursue the PUD process is because we want to feather a single-family to townhomes, to multifamily, because as you approach the commercial space, we just felt that having single-family homes right abutting to commercial space didn't really make a ton of sense to, to us. So that's part of our reason why we did it. Now here are the reasons the PUD existed. It allows us to do some building, building clusters. Okay, here's what the PUD allows for. We have smaller lot sizes. So as all of you probably, I'm sure you know, with the RA zoning, four thousand square feet is a minimum lot size. By using the PUD, it lets us have certain lots, have lots that are under four thousand square feet. And, and the idea, the bigger idea of the PUD was to cluster some of the homes a little tighter, so we can create bigger and more usable gathering spaces and open spaces. Now, I was looking at the Paramount subdivision, which is awesome. And, you know, they have almost a square mile of land, six hundred forty acres. They have one clubhouse, which is a great clubhouse with a pool, some walking paths and park. We have seventeen acres to work with, which is percentage-wise, what, three or four percent? And I would love to go through our amenity package too, because what we want to do is create environment with more amenities, but to do that, you have to need more contiguous open space. And so our amenity package, I think, is really nice. We have that tool shed. We have the, we have our clubhouse with a really nice pool. We have, um, here, I think we, I can show you. Michael knows the, the amenity package a little better, but and we'll go in that in a little bit. So smaller lot sizes, zero lot lines, back to clustering. We allow for the multifamily use for us to feather up to the commercial and private drives. And staff can probably comment on that. That's what we caught of what does not, and then, uh, Councilwoman Strater asked, give us a list of everything you, you are using this PUD for that deviates from the RA. So we, good or bad, this is what we're doing. The setback, here's our, sorry, here's our same, uh, presentation as the staff's. You know, we did the propose and what we're deviating from, so you guys can compare them side by side. I'm sure that they're, they should be pretty exact, because all we did was pull the code of what needs to be done and, and they use our numbers of what we're proposing. Michael, if you can come up and talk about the many packages, I would greatly appreciate it.
Michael Slaven, helping present, um, was it forty-four East Sermon Mill Street Garden City, Idaho? Um, thank you. So I'll jump into the amenities a little bit more. And what, the point Tony was trying to drive home was when you have seventeen acres versus, let's say, five hundred acres and you're trying to produce the same amount of amenities, some of which were required, like a community clubhouse. I believe that between the tool shed, a multifamily clubhouse and, and a clubhouse next to a pool, we actually have three on the site. So we're cramming a lot of amenity uses in a much smaller space. And that, that's one of the advantages of a PUD. And that's why you're, you're working hard to create a exemplary site plan. Where you're, by clustering homes, you have a lot more community space. Um, besides that, um, we actually, but in that, I want to emphasize as well is that these are actually plans we have, we commit to. So by submitting this, you know, to planning staff, we have to build these things. These aren't ideas. These are, and that's why they're somewhat granular. But we thought it was somewhat of a disservice to the bigger plan of the site. So there are some drill downs, um, on the site. So and to walk through these fairly quickly. You can see on the western portion of the site is we actually have, you know, community garden space with actually raised bed planners. Here, you know, nice, um, pocket parks on this side, which are pretty comparable to larger subdivisions, even though we're working with less space. And the other requirement of a PUD is a lot of connectivity. Um, you can see here that we do have the multi-use pathway. We do have, um, interstitial pathways in between a lot of the homes, which are, you know, create that, that great walkable environment. You see bike parking spaces here. You can see another pocket park here. Which everybody can, you know, jointly, um, enjoy. I think that the, one of the things that's underappreciated, but you can see more here at scale. Um, this is in the very center of the development, um, connecting to Orchard Park to the north. And this is actually where we intend to, to put a crosswalk in, a cross Orchard Park Drive, is we actually have enough space here, um, for a place to throw footballs and, and hang out and play spikeball, things like that. But we also have fire pits. You see these little groupings of chairs. It's actually, you know, hangout amenity space, um, next to a clubhouse. It's actually this multifamily structure. Um, you can see here, this is actually a, a shared amenity space, a tool, uh, tool library, et cetera. So as people are living in smaller spaces, they don't have the luxury of a huge garage, but they also want a place to go work on their, their bikes or, you know, skateboards or what, what have you. So we feel that that's a great amenity in a living environment like this. Um, moving down, of course, we have another pocket park here. We're not including, um, uh, what, point seven acres to the east, because it's, it's kind of out of the way. I think a lot of people actually enjoy walking their dogs there. Um, but it's not contiguous space in our view, so we're not trying to um, overinflate what we're doing. And then, sorry, here's, here's the last space. This is in the large triangle. The triangle is actually just over an acre. And we do have a couple of these boulder homes sitting within it, but for the most part, this acre is fairly open with, with quite a few, you know, opportunities for people to hang out and grab a picnic or do what they want to do. And then, of course, we have enough room for a soccer field, um, right next to the, the pool. Um, a community clubhouse here. So you can see when you think on, on an amenity level, I'd say that less than less than, you know, ten percent of any subdivision in the country has this many amenities, you know, for, for the rooftops involved in a subdivision. So we just, we're pretty proud of it and put a lot of work into it and feel that we meet the standard, um, that, thank you, Bill saying that we did. So I think that's it.
We can stand for any questions. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Always count on me to have questions. Uh, I have about three questions for you. First, uh, you referenced the parking question that I had for staff, and I want to clarify what my question actually was. Question was, did you move some anticipated street parking from those curved areas to the straight sections of public road on the south side? Or are they the same, the, the two side-by-side photos, again, it's hard to see on a small screen, but it looked like maybe there was more parking in the straight sections of public road on the south side than there was prior?
No, we, all we did was, every, every parking space on pub, pub, public road was just a removal. We didn't add any extra parking spaces.
Um, my concern about having, so you said you're overparked and that those spaces are not needed, but because it's a public road, of course, folks are permitted to use that as parking. My concern about those long straight sections of road where you have cars parked on both sides, there's a lot of opportunity for pedestrian accidents from people walking out from behind cars. You know, soccer balls running out into the street. Um, and when you have it double parked on both sides, um, I think that creates for more issues with safety problems on a, on a straight stretch of road. And that's a pretty long straight stretch of road. You have a stop sign in between those two stretches, but that's a pretty long stretch and people tend to speed up on those, right?
Yes.
So I'm wondering if there might be, um, if you consider the possibility of just doing the parking on one side or the other? Or, um, doesn't sound like you're gonna put signage on that, those stretches at all. It's just gonna be free parking uh, as a public street.
I mean, we were open to it. I mean, we don't, because we don't need it, it's whatever the, back to what we're informed. Again, I don't know if that information is correct. If, if the city wants it and the community wants it, you know, we're open to any of the, the parking issue for us. We meet our parking standards. So if the community says, hey, we want single-loaded streets for parking and that makes sense for everyone. And again, based on some clarification, if it's a city's decision, we'll work with the city. I mean, we, we, we feel that with the, um, the crosswalks that we want to put in, it should be decently safe. Maybe what we do is, as a, as a idea is maybe move some parking spaces away from the crosswalks, so there's more visibility around the crosswalks. So when people do want to cross, it's not like a, a car, a crosswalk and a car. Maybe we remove some of those. I think having some extra park in the street, streets are, is, is a benefit. But again, open to work with the city, absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, obviously, it's not something that we're gonna condition, because you met the standard, but I would appreciate considering the safety elements of having it parked on both sites and how close the lot, the, the spots are to each other.
Yeah. And I think if you guys, if everyone likes the idea, I mean, it's coming off the top of my head, but creating a gap where the crosswalks are, my, if that's sufficient, if everyone agrees with that, I prefer that. But if it's a, hey, it's gotta be single-loaded, we can talk about that too. Just love to have an open forum. But if it's a, hey, it's got to be single-loaded, we can talk about that too. Just love to have an open forum about that.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, I'm sure my other council members can share their thoughts on that. That's just my thought on it. Secondly, the section that has the curve right in the middle, where there is a green space on, on the northwest side, and there's the tool shed, is that what you called it? Kind of in the southeast?
Yeah, yes.
Section?
Off of Burg.
Can you pull up that?
Sure.
That zoom in. And just as you're doing that, I want to, I want to just share some feedback for future applications for you. These documents were really hard to read.
I know.
There was a ton of zooming in, zooming out, zooming in, zooming out, and I struggled. Okay, so have you made any consideration, again, not a condition, just a question? Have you made any consideration of maybe putting some brick or a different pavement product between across the street from those two areas so that it kind of identifies, hey, you're in a public use area? It will encourage people to slow down as they were coming upon a different design? And then also maybe tie those two common areas more together?
Yeah, I, that's a great comment. What we're able to do is do stamped concrete. A6D isn't like brick, but just so you know, if you see stamped concrete, that would be why.
And there's a certain part of the engineering. Once we get our construction plans, I've done a couple of developments here in Meridian. There's a good chance we have to put pavers in anyways for stormwater retention, for the stormwater mitigation. So if, if we are, there's a good chance we have to put some pavers into. So whether we like it or not, I think we might have to.
I'm guessing that'll be an area where a lot of folks will cross.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Just one more quick question on the amenities. What, what was the original reason for wanting to create such an amenity-heavy development? It, it kind of sounds like that's almost burdening you to some extent and how you're designing this.
And I think we addressed this last council meeting is that, you know, I'm, I'm going to be an empty nester next year. Michael's a single guy who lives in a townhome community with no front yards, no backyards. And I'm coming from a larger property and I, maybe because I'm lazy, I just don't want a big yard maintenance. I want to lock and go, but I still want to work on my bike and still want to go to the pool and have some open space. And sometimes we shoot ourselves in the foot by designing communities that we want, but we ought to make sure other people want it because we have to sell homes. But I think there's a demographic here and there's a lot of people moving in here that are empty nesters and want less. So our motivation was to have a little different product, not the usual, you know, R4, big yard, you have your gardens or dogs. You still have your dogs because we have plenty of places to walk your dogs and exercise, get out. And after we sat down, when we designed this community with Pivot North, our big thing was a walkable, almost, and because we're part of Orchard Park, we know that there's going to be so many amenities up there. I picture myself living there because I can not have to tend a yard. I have place to work on my stuff. I have an open space and I can walk across and get coffee. Now, I don't think I'm representative of everyone or most people, but I think there's a, we only have 140-some units. I think there's enough people that might want to live that way, but we're betting on it.
Council, additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I was appreciative of the application last time, and I think you both have made it certainly better. I love the PUD concept. I wish we'd see more. I think it, it allows you to do what you're doing here. Provides a more innovative and unique layout and design and product. So I, I just appreciate everything you both have done on this. I think it's really well done.
Thank you.
And I don't make, I want to get your reaction to this because when you remove seven units, that's a big deal.
Yeah.
From the amenities, it's a small project and the amenities you're providing. I want you to react briefly to that, that impact on your development with, I mean, your hard costs don't change, your infrastructure costs don't change. And sometimes the change in unit count doesn't get highlighted as much. That's a big deal and it's a big impact on your ability to deliver. So just want to get your brief reaction on that. It's a big concession, which is appreciated, but we also understand and don't highlight enough the economic reality of, of your project being viable when that, when that happens.
Yeah, of course, we had to work that pro forma a few times and that's kind of where we, we got to with the, the community. You know, we went in there with, I know it doesn't sound like much when it comes to 146 units, down to 139. It's, I know on the surface doesn't feel like a lot, but it's a lot to us when you hit a spreadsheet and that was the disappointing part. I mean, I, I think we had a great community meeting. The neighbor, the neighbors came out and I think they were just looking for more. And I just, and I finally said, honestly, this is all we got. If we have to do anymore, it doesn't make sense for us to do this anymore. And it wasn't a threat. I know some people took it as a threat. It's just the reality of development. And as we all know, we live in Meridian, we live in, our, our, the real estate prices are coming down and interest rates are higher. So it was like a double whammy, right? You know, construction costs are still decently high. Values are going down. We're losing units, but we still love this development and we have the, we have the advantage, I keep saying the advantage of Orchard Park. You know, this is, if we were just developers and we bought this land and we want to build units to sell them and make a profit, I'll tell you, at seven units, I would have told Michael, it's just, it's not worth the risk. You know, we have a bigger picture. We need to, we want this part of Orchard Park to be as beautiful as possible. And control the environment and have high-end renters because we want, we want the commerce at Orchard Park. I'll be honest with you. It's all economically placed. I'm not going to sit here and tell you it's because I'm, it's, we need this to be beautiful to ensure the development of Orchard Park's success also. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Share.
I have a few questions. Can you go to the original plans and just start by highlighting which units were removed?
Sure. Sonia, do you mind pulling up the original? Because we didn't, we didn't have the original in our presentation. Yeah, just, yeah, please. Oh, if you can go down, you know, I can control here, I think, right? It's, I think, the third slide down, not that one, one more. Number seven? Okay, I don't know if we can zoom in or not, but the, we did it, we did some alterations. We had some really good advice about, we had a boulder unit, a multifamily unit here on the south, right? Oh, this mouse. Here, that we converted into a townhome. We got rid of this boulder unit on the corner here. We got rid of this boulder unit on the corner here. So it was, those were three-unit multifamily units. So that's three there, three in the top northeast corner. And this three-unit down here in the southeast corner became a two-unit townhome versus a three-unit multifamily.
Got it. So you lost some garden, were they kind of garden style? How many units were in them? I don't remember.
There are three units each. So there are three unit.
So they were triplexes?
Technically, they're, you can find this time.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're multifamily. They're vertically aligned.
Okay, got it. Okay, so you lost those three. And then you added two single-family attached. So where are those?
Yeah, sorry. We, we replaced one of the locations that both are, and this mouse tracks a little funny. It's in the, the lower, here we go. This corner, can you see the circle I'm highlighting? Not really highlighting, but circling.
Yeah.
You can.
Okay, so you're saying you put two single-family there instead?
That's correct.
Got it. And then the other two you just lost and they became open space?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah. And then can you guys go, sorry to have you jump around, can you guys go to the slide that has the comparison of R8 and all the different setbacks? Yeah, I just wanted a minute to take a look at this. So I guess my feedback would be, it sounds like these changes are really positive. I, I think what concerns me at this point is that the materials we had to review, basically, we didn't, in my opinion, have a lot of time to, to review. I think it may be more our issue than your issue, but I am concerned also to hear from the neighbors, obviously, whether they feel they've had time. But just looking at this, I mean, just for comparison purposes, you know, if you were under the R8 setbacks, how many units would you be able to fit in this development? That was one of the questions that I had.
If you're asking based on the current design, we haven't ever, we as a developing team have never looked at it as an R8 design. If we had the time to go redesign it, we can give you a number, but we just haven't gone through that exercise of doing the normal R8 yet.
But you couldn't even, with sort of like the lot size and the amount of developable land, you couldn't even like take a swag at it?
We, we could. I mean, we just haven't. We'd be.
That kind of surprises me that you.
Well, because it's, I'm not trying to be cute, but we designed this from day one as this. This has been our vision since day one. It's, we never had a Plan B. So we could, I mean, the pure math is, you know, I guess we can do some quick math of how many acres the streets take up and using 4,000 square foot lots and the setbacks. I mean, we can.
That's kind of where I was going. Yeah, just back of the envelope, understanding that that wouldn't really be totally correct, right? But at least it would be a, a swag. And part of the reason I'm asking is I, I have not been convinced that this merits a PUD. So that's part of the reason for me asking that question.
I, yeah. I don't know how to respond to that in the sense of, I think, I think the word merits a PUD confused me a little bit because I don't think there's, there's qualification to be a PUD. And, you know, we were hoping that we demonstrated some of the qualifications. Michael can speak on that point a little bit.
Yeah, it's, excuse me, and, and it's somewhat related to never performing an exercise for a typical R8 lot. Looking at it, they said the constraints we did give away, Orchard Park Drive is a condition of the original development agreement was quite a bit of land as well. And the way it was shaped, connecting essentially in front of a firehouse to Fox Run created a technical condition that was pretty tough. And so how any of these developments go is we go into the planning staff for a pre-app meeting and we talk about what's possible. And knowing that we had a minimum standard of least R6 to hit, we thought it'd be much wiser just to actually pursue our PUD. So we worked quite a bit with planning staff that are pretty sophisticated in this. This is their passions. We go to school to do and work a lot with them hand in hand. From a guidance perspective and, and producing these plans, it costs a tremendous amount of time and effort and energy and, and resources and, and capital. And so we rely a lot on that guidance, to be honest. And so when we, you know, get a level of comfort that we qualify for a PUD based on the amenities that we're offering, you know, the level of design we're offering, we get a lot of conviction and go forward with it. And so hopefully, that helps provide more context and why we, we pursued a PUD and, and as well, didn't really spend much time looking at R8 standard lot development.
It does. It, it just frankly, it does not satisfy my question, which is, I believe when we use a PUD, we should have an accurate comparison between what we're getting and what we would have had under the traditional zoning. But, you know, if you guys can get a chance to sort of do that back of the envelope, I think that's helpful. It doesn't mean, by the way, it's not like that's the decision point. It's not like that less units is better, but it's like, I just think dancing around it is silly. I, I think we should be able to, as a city council, look at what we would have under the traditional process and then compare it, you know, accurately with the PUD. All right, well, I'll, I'll quiet down now, Mr. Mayor, and, and maybe we'll hear from others.
Council, additional questions for the applicant?
It's from here.
Councilwoman Pro.
Could you go to the next slide where it shows the comparison of setbacks in the R8 zone? There's another one that, that was provided. Keep going, I think.
Excuse me, that would have been in our presentation.
Is that the one with the graphic on it?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's on.
Oh, was that staff's presentation we were looking at?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Yes, in your presentation. That, that is a document I would have really liked to have had. I don't know, I didn't see it in the file. I just wanted you to leave it up for a few moments so I can review it because you went through it really fast.
Yeah, no problem.
I didn't have a specific question related to that. Thank you.
Would you like to hear from other people while you look at that? So I think you guys can sit there, go to, go to testimony in the public. But with that, Mr. Quirk, do we have anybody signed up to write testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we do. First, Sally Reynolds.
Good evening, Sally, again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city councils, Sally Reynolds, 1166 West Bacall Street, Meridian, Idaho. First, just wanted to thank you all for listening so closely to the feedback from the public last time and for hearing that. I am really pleased to see a number of things have been explained or changed. I mean, in particular, that PUD qualification a little bit more with regard to the parking. Just want to back up what Tony said. The ACHD lawyer told us Meridian City is the parking authority on residential streets. So if you could put that in your motion as a condition of approval that Meridian City does not approve parking on our list, Burley, Bergman or Director, and that the applicant should, the applicant should work with ACHD to get whatever studies or signage is necessary to make that happen. That would be great. I think the developers have tried hard to give us a pleasing development in this fluctuating real estate market that will meet Meridian's changing demographics. I have no objection to the development as it has been presented tonight. I believe the applicant has been transparent and communicative with the public. They have made an effort to reduce units. While it's not close to 120 units I'd like, any other developer could come in here and put about the same number of units under R8 standards is what I personally think. I would have loved to have, I like council member Strater said, a comparison. But by my best guess, using the PUD, maybe they would have had 15 more units. And so by losing seven, I feel like they kind of met us in the middle. They are trying to make them blend with the commercial area and they are feathering density in a small area. They're doing that well. And they are the developer who has the most vested interest in making this community a quality place to live, which they are doing through the amenities. I still don't love the condominium units here. I would have preferred to see those built in a zoning area where they truly fit the zoning. But they are not overrunning the development or making a huge difference in the total number of units. So I am not opposed to this application. However, I would like it stated on the record by council believes this development meets the requirements of a PUD. So there is a very narrow window other applications can reference to justify zero-foot setbacks on certain lot lines and around the perimeter of the plot. PUDs are handled on a case-by-case basis, and as long as you are on the council, you'll know how an application compares to this one. But future council members may not unless it's stated. I take away from this application is that from the optics point of public, sometimes it seems like staff is giving coaching on how to use loopholes in the city code to be creative and get around things. And I understand that when a developer comes to city staff and says, this is what we want to do, it's city staff's job to say, here are the options we have available to you. Here are the, some of the things that we can do. And that's great. And they can explore those options. But then when those suggestions are taken and presented by city staff in a recommendation, it seems there's not a, I guess, ranking on how strong that recommendation is if they've used those tools properly given our city code. So one, and I'll just, a suggestion for that, for example, with this application, since they were applying for a PUD, it would have been awesome if in the staff report, it had the PUD from the city code, that section of code in the staff report saying, this is what a PUD is. It's just a great refresher and you would have had it right there to read at your fingertips. Thank you. you would have had it right there to read at your fingertips. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Sally. Council, any questions? I think you're good. Thank you. If there's anybody online and you would like to testify on this item as well, please use the raise your hand feature so we can put you in the queue. Up next, Mr. Clerk.
Uh, next is Kelly Carpenter.
Good evening, Kelly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council member, members. Kelly Carpenter, five nine nine one North Arless Avenue in Meridian. Um, tonight I'm coming to you exhausted. I'm exhausted by my daily life and attending yet another cigar meeting where I feel that developers haven't truly listened. Um, yes, they have reduced the numbers of units, but does this number of units they have still really make sense? There's no reason this development should be granted PUD. The developers were the decision makers and how to divide the land in the first place. We all love our community of Meridian and that is why we are here tonight. Per our last neighborhood meeting, we made suggestions to lower the building heights, change multifamily units into larger community center or a clubhouse, but no, they're not willing to budge. Unfortunately, our time together ended the same as the previous two meetings. Michael and Tony showed their plan, listened to our feedback, then left with a, well, this is it, take it or leave it attitude. Um, Orchard Park has not been what it was promised, promoted to be thus far, and this residential section I feel will not be either. These units will be shoved right up to the sidewalks and roads. Nightly, I am witness to people drag racing down Orchard Park Drive. I can't imagine when one of those cars slams into a residential building and takes the life because the buildings do not have the proper setbacks. I would love to have the developers start building on their land immediately. I'm tired of the rodents and the weeds that are constantly infiltrating my home. This development needs to be right for the community. My suggestions would be to eliminate the multifamily units that back up to the park and the intersection of Bergman and Orchard Park Drive. Not only are these units out of place, they do not have the proper parking. These units that were removed are on the east side of the development and the two multifamily units are on the west side. So the parking spots added by reducing the seven units does not help that situation. Additionally, I would ask that the developer would need to follow the step, the standard setbacks. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Kelly, just a question. I mean, there's going to be houses here.
Absolutely.
And it's just a matter of what kind and what that looks like. I mean, one of the options truly is if they sell and it goes to someone comes from out of state and they just slap up, they increase the lot size a bit, but the homes are not quality. I, I don't think that benefits Paramount at all. Paramount is a beautiful subdivision. So what we're trying to attract here is a quality development, befitting to be beside Paramount and then feather into that as they use the term development, because it is hard to have really nice homes. And that's why you see multifamily up closer to commercial properties. I mean, that's the other option is, is, you know, you got a bird in the hand here, or do you, do you go to option B and we don't know what that is and it could be worse? Your advice, please.
Um, council member, Holgland, thank you. Um, I agree. I love many components of this development. I do believe the developers have worked hard. Again, I feel that they have had these meetings with us, but it has been, this is what it is. And we too want a quality development. And I feel per what fellow council members have stated tonight, that there needs to be a little bit more thought, a little bit more documentation, a little bit more time put into this. Um, I wish it was built tomorrow. Like I said, I'm truly tired of living next to a field with dust and rodents and weeds, tired of listening to the drag racers at night. I'm sure if there were homes there, then I wouldn't hear it as well as there would probably be more police out there policing the road. And so, yes, I truly do want Tony and Michael to build. I think this will be great, but I think that the small pieces that they're focusing on, the tool shed, the dog washing, good, that's good, community, let's get more, bigger. Why couldn't we take away one of the multifamily units at a minimum and put in a bigger community center? Um, I have been in this community for over ten years. I am a mom of three. I'm a homeschooler. My kid, I have two other kids that go to brick and mortar schools. I've constantly talked to moms who want gathering, community to be together. And I know that they're speaking about young professionals that want to lock up and go, but that's not going to be the only people that purchase these. Um, there will be young families with one child just starting off that can't afford a home. Maybe they can afford a nice condo though, or a nice town home. You know, they're going to want that. And I know they keep talking about these bits and pieces of little green space. I just feel like it's not enough. It needs to be just a little bit more. And if that means eliminating even one of the multifamilies, what they are calling the turtle head and the turtle tail, why can't we eliminate one of those?
Kelly, appreciate those comments, helpful. And they have removed three multifamily. One of them was replaced with two, I believe they're townhomes. But, I mean, that, that is from our understanding and knowing how the developers work and you know, how some of the costs are, that, that was a big concession. I understand that. So, and I, I do believe I did hear that there is a community center there of some sort. So, I mean, they have the tool shed, yes, but there is a community center. If you guys could make sure that I heard correctly. So, yeah, because we definitely look at those things as what are the amenities, especially places that are where it is more compact. So, but your comments are greatly appreciated because we do want things to be quality, especially where, where you live. It's, it's very nice. I have friends who live there and it's, it's, it's a great neighborhood.
Absolutely. Yep. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Quick follow up question. Sally's comments and your comments, and then council member Holgland's questions. Do you look at it and do you provide comment from the perspective of whether or not as presented, it would be popular and in demand for that future customer? And you're concerned that without these changes, it might not be as attractive for the individual who's going to reside here? Or is it not that? And instead, just from the perspective of, you know, an adjacent property owner, a member of Paramount who's concerned that even, even if it's in high demand as presented, we think it should have some adjustments to it.
Right. Um, thank you, council member, Borton. I honestly come to it from both sides. Um, again, I am a member of the community. I love our community. This is an amazing community. My husband and I chose to raise our children here. Um, I want to be able to befriend these people. And if they are, you know, young professionals or their families, or maybe they're retired people, I just want a good community. And absolutely adjacent neighbor, I mean, do I want a four story, you know, I'm not saying that this is, but like four, you know, do I want a huge building? Of course I don't want that, you know. Um, but I just, again, the concern is like just the amount of units, the crowding, the pushing. You know, I go honestly anywhere in Meridian, there's, there's so many little shopping centers popping up and not Orchard Park specifically. Um, but the parking is a problem. Um, specifically Linder and McMillan across the street from Walgreens where, um, uh, Mike's Subs is at. There's Loose Screw Brewing, there's a workout place in there, there's an Italian place, and there's a huge dirt lot and it is chock full of cars. What's going to happen when they build there? And I just think in general, as the city of Meridian, as a community, we can focus on more planful and better parking. So that's again, a concern. I know they're saying that they have enough. I've gone through and counted and those multifamily units, I personally don't feel like they have enough parking. So again, it's not my job, just a personal kind of gut, look at the numbers, know who moves into multifamily units. It's not typically two people with two cars. It's typically more than that. So just kind of my feeling on that and doing well for the community. Yeah. Yeah.
Council, any additional questions? All right.
Thank you so much for your time.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, those were the only people that marked they wanted to speak.
Okay. Is there anybody else present that would like to come forward and provide testimony on this item? If so, come forward now, or if you're online, please use the raise your hand feature. Seeing no one coming forward or raising their hand if the applicant would like to come forward to close.
Mayor, um, this is Bill. If, if the council would like me to indulge the audience on what a PUD is and how that all works, I'm happy to do that. I think they're just looking at the last hearing and tonight's hearing, I think there's some, I don't think everyone really understands what it, what it is and what we do as staff when we, we work with the applicant and guide them through the code. So again, if, if you want me to do that, I'm happy to, to go through that exercise and share kind of our feedback and our review of how we analyze this project when we prepare our recommendations.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
I think that's helpful. Um, I think the title eleven seven five findings, which are part of the analysis that, that we should discuss openly. If that's helpful for all of us for sure, as well as the public.
Thank you. So first of all, I just want to give you some context that Sonia and I have been working with this applicant well over a year. And what we do when we meet with an applicant is we go through their previous approvals and make sure that they're meeting the requirements of their contract. In this particular case, the applicant had a bubble concept plan that Sonia shared with you this evening. And there was a requirement for a minimum amount of density on this R eight piece. The DA says you have to have a minimum of six dwellings to the acre on this site. The comp plan calls for three to eight dwellings to the acre. Applicant came in and met with us and said, we want to, we want to develop this consistent with the MDR designation. We don't want to go through a comprehensive plan map amendment. We don't want to rezone this. What can we do in order to get up, develop this three day dwelling in the acre and still meet the spirit of this development? And that's where we started the dialogue of a plan unit development. And looking at the site and looking at the development for agreement for this particular project, it was very clear that this was to be part of this development and integrated into this development. As part of that, the applicant was required to build an entire baggage road as part of phase one. They were not to have a direct connection into Paramount, which resulted in the S curve of that road that tied into the collective road that they were required to build. And they were required to work the Brighton development to the east to provide a connection to Fox Run so that we can get people out to the light. So when you put all of that into context into tonight's discussion, you're left with this irregular shaped piece of par, property that is meets the eligibility requirements of the PUD. You, you put into context that there's actually a forty foot wide irrigation easement along the south and east boundary that had to be piped and relocated at the expense of the applicant. And the fact that they were able to work with the irrigation district to landscape that, to make it an attractive amenity for the community and tie in with Linder Village, both well, it's a PUD. Now, according to, um, the, the applicant or some of the testimony that you've heard on this, a lot of the neighbors are keep speaking to the setbacks along the periphery. The applicant's keeping with that spirit. Um, in the staff report, we made a finding that because of that irrigation facility, these lots don't necessarily back up to Paramount. That forty foot setback is, or that landscape buffer along that perimeter, it's the transition. We often talk about that at public hearings is when we have smaller lots against county residents, we always often talk about a transition and the comp plan contemplates that. In this particular case, that is a great transition, not only for this community, but also for the Paramount community. The applicant's also working with the neighbors to address their fencing on that south boundary. So there's another um, attribute to the applicant working with them. Now, when you get into the PUD findings, when you look at chapter two of the code, it's, it's, we know this is R eight zoning. That's what they were annexed with. The art, the chap, chapter two of the code says you can have multifamily in an R eight zone if you go through the PUD process. So when we start that conversation with the applicant, we do go through the code with them and say, you have to make these findings and you have to meet these standards. And so quickly I'll run through that. So here's what we do to check the boxes for you. And we provide that analysis in the staff report as well as the findings at the end of the staff report. So here's one of the general standards for PUDs, deviations from the underlying district requirements. It says they're allowed as long as it's not along the perimeter, the periphery. Well, the applicants, Sonia and I looked at the plat, sorry, excuse me, staff has looked at the revised plat, all of the lots up along Paramount are over four thousand minimum lot sizes. So they don't necessarily need to do that, but they have done that. And the only deviation from their setbacks are the rear setbacks where they're asking for a ten foot setback instead of a twelve foot setback. I found that was appropriate. When you look at the landscape buffer along the collector roadway, that has been installed with the development of the property. That's a twenty foot buffer. The conditions of approval in the staff report says you're going to enhance that buffer and make it even nicer as part of this development. The applicant has agreed to that. So in context, when we're really talking about a PUD and how this relates, it's really that internal portion that you see here. And when you actually have a forty foot landscape buffer that narrows that portion of the site. And so to councilwoman Strader's comments, why didn't you do a typical RA development? Well, if you would have, you probably would have got half a, half the density at four dwellings to the acre. You will get a cookie cutter development and you would have never met the requirements of the DA. And that's where staff and I, or Sonia and I met with the applicant and said, let's try to keep with the intent of what it was intended for from their, from the onset when it was in front of you. The other one is allowed uses. Applicants may request specific conditional accessory uses allowed in the district. Be allowed as principally permitted uses. Again, multifamily. Interconnected uses. Again, this is integrating not only with Paramount, but also the commercial to the north with interconnected pathways. The applicant shared that with you in their presentation tonight and they showed you how that was going to, to be accomplished. They brought up building clusters. You clustered the buildings in this particular case central into the development so that you can have greater amenities and more open space. They've done that. Uh, private open space, their condition that each one of these units has to have eighty square feet of private open space. That will be verified when they come in for building permits. That's a requirement. And then it says infill developments. Um, it says, this is, again, it's infill, but not necessarily five acres or less. So that one's not applicable. Uh, but it goes on to say that you need to comply with maintain the density of the underlying district or the comprehensive plan. And they are, they have not asked for density, but density bonus as part of this project. Technically, they could have. Because if you look at the overall development, they had a library, they had public spaces as part of that approval. Technically, they could have asked for higher density for you to consider as part of this application. But they, again, they wanted to meet the spirit of the development agreement and the original approval and meet with the neighbors and work with them to get something that was closer to that eight dwelling in the acre. And that's what they've tried to do tonight. So in looking at all of that and looking at the standards of the code, that's where staff has landed. And we found that it was consistent with the PUD standards and it did meet the requirement of those standards. That's how we got in front of you tonight. So I'm happy to elaborate anymore on some of those standards, but in our minds, this is, this is a plan unit development. It does meet the requirements of the code.
Councilor Scherer.
I think it's really important to go through the eligibility requirements. Can you please discuss those in terms of it being an irregular piece of property and what that bar is under code?
Mayor, members of the council, councilwoman Strader, are you, are you referring to the applicability section or are you referring to the standards?
No, to the applicability, the eligibility for a PUD.
Uh, it says a plan unit development can be developed in any district. Um, it shall be unlawful in a violation of unified development code for any person used construct, uh, real. So basically it says it's, it's allowed and you have to follow the rules.
Okay. But what I'm getting at is the piece where we talk about how we would not give this to just any property. It needs to be in a regular piece of property. And the reason I'm bringing that up is that the other examples I can think of for a PUD have been where we have, especially where we have changed setbacks so dramatically, have been a piece of property where we had like a state highway coming through it or something pretty major. And maybe that's where my disconnect is, but if you can just help me understand why it makes sense here. And the other properties or I've seen something similar where we're changing setbacks to this extent have been like major obstacles.
Mayor, members of the council, councilwoman Strader, just right to the east of this development is Paramount Director, which went through the PUD process and it's right along Chindon. So Brighton has done three of those developments as part of the PUD process to deviate from our dimensional standards. And again, you see here that if you compared this, this development in front of you is a hundred and ninety six units And again, you see here that if you compared this, this development in front of you is a hundred and ninety six units. At five point five dwelling units to the acre. And that was a P U D. So I, again.
Okay, so.
The idea is. The purpose statement says preserve natural scenic and historic features of major importance. Well, I can tell you not a lot of those properties exist in Meridian. Number two, allow for innovative design that creates visually pleasing and cohesive patterns of development, including but not limited to. Residential development at great densities greater than eight dwelling into acre. Where design guidelines are in place for development and where garage doors are generally not fronting on the street. So in this particular case, because the requirement for keeping the periphery consistent with the adjacent development. They have to be garage dominated per the P U D standards. But when you get to the internal portion of the development. They're all fronting on the street and all the parking is internal onto private streets or shared driveways. Which is again, meeting the purpose statement of the P U D. And it's, and it's, it is not the intent in the P U D process to be used solely for the purpose of deviation from the dimensional standards.
Right, that, that's where I'm getting hung up.
And it's not. So in our, in our. And I, I think from staff's perspective, when you look at the amount of open space that they're providing in excess of code. They're still meeting the parking, they're having. A higher amenity package than what you see with your typical R eight development. Or making that finding that this is exemplary design. It is trying to keep with the spirit of the law. Of their development agreement and meeting the requirements for a P U D. And that's, that's how we look at that. It's, it's a whole, looking at the whole P U D. Code section comprehensively, not just a portion of it and saying this applies or doesn't apply. It really, you have to look at everything comprehensively and then make that determination. And that's where staff landed on recommending approval of this project. With what you're seeing tonight.
So if someone asks me what. What the bar is for future development to warrant a P U D. So far, what I'm hearing the answer is, is if you have more open space. And the periphery of your project meets our requirements. Then that's the bar. Am I missing anything else? In terms of what? What someone would take away from an approval on this?
Councilwoman Strater, I think it's exemplary design. So again, you have to look at the design of the units. The fact that there is going to be private open space associated with that. You have to note that there are. Yep, amenities have increased above what code requires. And there's a mix of residential product types. I think that's the, the whole, it's, it's all of those factors that come into it. To say that it's a P U D. It's not just one thing.
Okay, thanks for the feedback.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Pro.
Thank you, Bill. I, I would like you to touch on the mix of residential product types. I don't know that I've. Ever seen one before us with six different residential types and, and I. That is one of the larger parts of this that I'm struggling with. I, it doesn't, it feels very divided. And not cohesive. So maybe that's just because I'm looking at a two dimensional drawing that's small and I don't have, you know. Something to give me more context, but was that something you discussed with the applicant? To maybe not do so many product types or is that a benefit from the staff's perspective?
Mayor, members of the council, councilwoman Pro. A lot of the language you're seeing tonight, it's marketing by the applicant. In our, and when, when staff analyzes this project, we look at our definition of our code and we're like, what are these units? So the single family units along Paramount, they're just that, they're single family detached in our code. The duplex units, they're single, we call them single family attached units. So there's your second product type. And then the third product is the multi-family. So in this particular case, you have single family attached, you could, you have some townhomes, which are the three units and then you have, so you actually have four. Product types and you're not six. They've laid labeled it as six, but. In the context of our code and how we define them, there's actually a total of four as part of this development. Which again, meets the standard of the P U D. And it's allowed in sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
That's important.
To close the loop on that, when I think that explanation, you walking through that. Should be part of the initial presentation for P U D's. Because they're great questions and that very site specific context is really an important part of the story. And as I understand P U D's and as outlined in our code, is there intentionally not. Set out with a specific box parameter. They're, they're purposely flexible. And the standards have some mush to them intentionally to invite creativity. It makes it difficult perhaps to draw a line, what's, what makes one sufficient and another one insufficient. Very, very fact specific and subjective. One of the elements that comes up in these P U D discussions of setbacks. The way the code uses the word solely. To me is important. It can't be solely for the purpose of, of eliminating some or all setback requirements. That's always going to be a component in every P U D. But it has to have all those other elements, some, some context to it that. The initial purpose elements that you described, so. It's one of the explanation reasons to Sally's question that's articulated on the record that it's sufficient in my eyes. But it's really helpful to explain it and then talk through that in detail like you did. So I appreciate that.
Mayor, council, I'll also let you know, as you, as you are aware, we, we try to amend the code. Throughout every year and P U D standards are definitely one of those. Items that we want to review this year and make it a little more clear as how they, how they function and. When they're, they're applicable, or at least define that a little bit better. So just wanted to go on the record and share that with you as well. We're working with the U D C focus group on that.
Council, any more questions for staff at least on that information? Hey, before we ask happen to come up and close, I will. See if there's anybody else in the community who would like to come forward and provide additional testimony based on the stuff that was heard. You have one person that would like to come back up who mentioned this in her statements. Sally, if you'd like to come back up.
You, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Sally Reynolds, again, one one six six West Bacall Street. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come back and address you. I thought that. Bill's explanation would be part of the staff report, so I appreciate the opportunity to. I guess respond to that a little bit. And I do think I, I will just back him up and agree, I agree with solely. For setbacks is kind of where I got hung up on this application the very first time. And the amount of amenities that they are providing, I could then see kind of why it was a P U D, especially with the DA agreement trying. To say you have to have absolutely are six. Where, I mean, and it is. I guess the periphery that I, the periphery one that I do struggle with a little bit, that I take a little issue is not the one on my side. It's the north end. And I know it's zero percent setbacks, zero feet setbacks only at certain points. But then what it's kind of counting on is the buffer from that point out to the street. Which that's okay. If the council finds that that's okay. And they can use that even though it's not part of their plat, in their plat as using it as a buffer. To satisfy that requirement. Then please state that so that other developers don't come in and say, we have a zero percent setback and there's nothing there. You know what I mean? And then as far as, what was the other one? Yeah, and then the, the multi, the multi-family units. The only thing that I'll have to say about that is our eight does allow for the single family and single family attached. Well, detached and attached and townhomes. And so looking at the periphery, there's thirty two along the periphery of single family detached, right? So if those became attached or if they all became townhomes. Or if they all became, I think that we would kind of be looking at the same number of units. But I do agree that adding those extra diversity types makes it feel a little bit hodgepodge. And that's where are they using the P U D just to do that or to really be innovative? And so I would just encourage you to say that in your findings so that future P U D's that come before you. Can take that into consideration. And then also just, I wouldn't have brought up the P U D if I felt like those were really addressed in the staff report. They were there, but then I felt like as a resident, I had to go through the code and find out it's solely not for setbacks. And that's where the optics didn't look good is that I had to bring that to council's attention and it wasn't there in the staff report. And then there were suggestions of how to get or not. There were suggestions on, originally they wanted to waive the eighty spent, eighty square foot of private space open for every unit. And one of the suggestions was, well, if, if you. Apply for an urban label, then you can. Okay, well, that's a great suggestion. But if that, if they're going to actually do that, then I feel like somewhere in the staff report. The term urban needs to be defined and why they actually met that. Does that make sense? That's, that's where I'm at with the P U D. That's why I came before you one time saying. This doesn't qualify as a P U D. And now I'm not necessarily opposed because there's been a little bit more explanation. And that's been on the record now, so I feel more comfortable with that. But I'm not comfortable when there's suggestions from staff with no meat behind it that makes the residents go. We have to go dig into the city code ourselves to find out if this is really substantiated.
Thank you, Sally. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Borden.
Can, as to your first point on the setbacks on the north, I don't know if Sonia or Bill can comment on it. You were asking for some clarity in the discussion or findings. But I don't, I apologize, I might not have been tracking what you were looking for.
No, that's okay. As I understand in the staff report, Bill, there's only on that northern side, there's only a few points where they're asking for zero. Zero foot setbacks. And it is on the periphery. So technically in the code, it says that when you have a P U D. There's no changes in setbacks along the periphery, which that would be a zero percent. You know, technically it's part of the plat, that other twenty feet of space to the sidewalk into the road. Isn't part of their plat. I mean, through no fault, no fault of their own, they had to do that collector road and I understand that. But it just, I feel like that kind of is walking a fine line.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could respond to one thing, this project is a little unique and that the subdivision plat was approved a while back. And it was under a different code. It has been amended since then. To allow the twenty foot wide street buffer along the collector street to be in an easement rather than a common lot. Our old code required it to be in a common lot. So then setbacks are measured off of the, the lot lines. So if, if this were reviewed under the current code today, then there wouldn't be any need for a deviation to that setback. So just to, you know, kind of explanation on the old code that this was. Kind of, it kind of falls under the old and the new, but there are existing lot lines that required then that kind of do defect, affect development today on this. And, and I appreciate your comments, Sally, on the staff report. It's always good to hear feedback on what. You know, what the public and, and the council likes to hear. It's always a fine line that staff walks as to. How lengthy to make the staff reports and how much of city code to regurgitate. You know, in the staff reports and it's, you know, nobody wants to la 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 la, you know. Read a really long staff report and anyway, I appreciate your comments and, and council's comments as well on this.
And Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff, thank you. I appreciate that explanation. It really does help. And I think that you explaining that on the record will hopefully be there also for future applications. So I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Mr. Mayor, council, excuse me, I, I, it's. I love this type of process because there's a lot of tension. Usually that's spurned because of creativity. And, and thank you so much. I wish I could speak as eloquently as Bill about the application of a, of a P U D. For the record, this is my, my pleasure, what my third in the valley, two of which were in Garden City. And I know it's somewhat of a new living style, the waterfront district, everybody probably knows about was the first I was involved in, what, thirteen years ago? It's now the coolest neighborhood in Garden City. And nobody wanted to be, nobody wanted to actually admit they lived in Garden City thirteen years ago. So it was, it was pretty edgy for its time, but what it's done is it's brought a community together. I still live in that community by choice. I love living there. I'm not going to live anywhere else. And then we actually have another P U D just up the street and they are a little bit confusing. It's not trying to be tricky. We are really being innovative. And again, I think the waterfront district is, is a perfect testament of how this works out in time with several different living styles right next to each other and how you can build a fantastic community out of it. And, and that's our hopes for this project. I, I think that the only other question that came up is parking. I know parking is a big concern and this is more speaking specifically to Orchard Park. And, and there's certain standards that we need to, to adhere to for co-compliance essentially for, for what we're building. But I will say that we're going through a stringent process with our code declarant being Winco on the site that. We're actually offering ten spaces per thousand square feet for the restaurants. So we're actually very confident that we're offering a lot of parking holistically on the site. And then the last thing I'd like to point out is just a testament to our conviction is that when you look at other branch libraries throughout the valley, typically they're in strip malls. And we've spent a tremendous amount of money and resources to provide a fantastic facility for the Meridian Library District that. You know, wasn't an obligation of ours, but something we really wanted to do. So I, I just hope that that stands as a concrete testament to our conviction to do nice projects.
I have nothing else to add. Just that I, I hope everyone understands that, you know, it, it somewhat was depicted that we just kind of said, take it or leave it. We worked really hard on this and I, I know that's part of our jobs, you know, we. And Sally's been awesome to work with. She's educated me on certain things and I've met with her. I feel like I've gotten there really well because. Two, three hour meetings, four or five times with the community. I really enjoy that part of it, honestly. It's, it's, it's interesting to hear the feedback and you also realize that you can't please everyone. But I hope that you guys feel that we've done a, a good enough job and then we've tried hard enough to, you know, so you guys can improve this project.
Mr. Mayor.
That's my other one.
Question, can you comment about your community center, your, your.
Clubhouse, whatever you call that. Certainly, yeah. And, and you know, funny enough, because of multi-family requirement, we, we have two clubhouses. There, there's one in, in what is known as the Turtle Head. It's adjacent to this nice seating area and, and you know, common walkway. Actually up to Orchard Park. So it's kind of this little pink object. There's a clubhouse in, whoops. Oh, we need a little laugh. It's good. Is this, there's actually a clubhouse in here, but then we also have another clubhouse. The pool isn't depicted. Yeah, we can actually go to a much larger detail.
Oh, yeah, actually it's on our.
That's okay. You kind of see it here. It's really small. I'm sorry, councilwoman Pro, this is really small. But there's, you can see there's a pool deck and a clubhouse here. And, and what's interesting is, is you know, even, even one of these clubhouses, Paramount has one clubhouse for five hundred acres. And you know, on this site, we actually have two and, and a tool shed, tool library, dog washing stations and it's pretty highly amenitized. We're pretty excited about it.
Anything else? Council on questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all ponder, I could go through my little, you know, my life is a song sometimes and this reminds me of the great facts of life song from the day. You know, where you're taking, whether she take the old, you take the new, you put them together and there you have the P U D today. I mean. And that's what really what this comes down to in a lot of ways, you know, you are taking a lot from different concepts and trying to put them together and. There's pluses and there's minuses and. Does it look like you, you would like it to look with those things all considered? Kind of like buying a car sometimes too.
Mr. Mayor.
That's important.
We'll get some, just some comment before we close the public hearing, but, but. I appreciate the work that's gone into this and the discussion between the applicant staff and the public. I do see it with the, the flexibility that it's intended to have, but I look at. But I look at not only the prior approvals and the entitlements on this property, but also the, the Title XI, Chapter VII, the purpose and the findings of a PUD and plat application that's before us. And in this one, I think it's, it's met, and it's, it's pretty clearly met for me. I don't really see, I see bad, I see more, the phrase I would use is trade offs that by having some adjustments in some of these standards that would otherwise apply, it opens the application up to be unique and creative, something that we don't see as often. And and all of the reasons that that the staff report articulates, this application presents robust amenities to unique site design and layout, all to me clearly warrants approval. I think it's going to be a beautiful project. And it's not in a vacuum on an island. It is a part of this integrated region. And we can be pretty sure that a lot of these folks will be pedestrian accessing libraries and shopping centers directly to the north. So that's exactly what we had hoped would happen. I think a PUD serves its purpose. Specific purpose in code is met here. So it's an application as updated by the applicant with today's application. Fully supportive of. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
When they first came through, I read all the neighbors' comments and read through everything you guys had done. And the first thing I realized is what a, not a horrible, but really a tough piece of ground you guys were trying to develop. And to meet all the standards that were being brought forth and to meet all the requests that were being put upon you. But as we sit here today and I look at what you brought forward and I look at the fact that you met with the neighbors again and did a follow up meeting. My biggest area of concern at the very beginning was transportation part. It was the parking. It was the parking on the curves. It was a concern of several of the neighbors. And you eliminated that. I think you've done a fantastic job on giving as far as you can and still keeping this to be the high quality project presented when we first heard it. It's going to be a great buffer between Paramount and the whole complex, the library and all the restaurants. I'm totally impressed with what you're doing on this piece of ground. I support it very much. And I would just say, and I say this a few times now, is if we didn't approve this, what would we end up with in this spot? And I think at least what we're looking at right now, I know we're looking at high quality, and I know we're looking at innovative design. And I think we've done a very good job on trying to bridge that gap between those two. I would like to have one other comment for staff because this is the first time I've ever seen a PUD. And because they have almost some different amount of flexibility built into them, different from a lot of applications, I'd sure like to see a lot of that explanation of the PUD brought into those future staff reports so we can look at that. This time you did a fantastic job. And and my hat's off to the staff and the neighbors, especially Sally. Thank you so much for everything you've done. A culmination of a lot of hard support. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Caver.
To chime in. I love public hearings. I walked into our meeting tonight frankly not supportive of this project. I think in our last meeting, I asked the question, I, I didn't get a satisfactory answer, is how does our community benefit? That's, that's the threshold for me. And I think like Councilmember Pro, I saw too many type of housing projects like, oh, we're just trying to fit so many different things here to maximize every square inch. I, I didn't see it necessarily as benefiting our community. I think it's something that Meridian has really been faced with is a lot of diversity of housing. And our community responds in many different ways about diversity. People love it, others who've lived here our whole lives, we struggle with it, right? And I've definitely fallen into that ladder. But I appreciate frankly staff's, you know, overview of the PUD process. To Councilmember Overton's comments, I think I've been on the council ten years. I think this is the third one that we've seen, and each one has been uniquely different. So while I agree with the recommendations about greater information in a, in the staff reports around these PUDs, I, I also, Mr. Mayor, just I'm forecasting, and when we talk about future meeting topics at the end of tonight's meeting, I'm going to ask for a workshop with maybe a further presentation from staff about PUDs and things that council should consider because I think we need to be better equipped to handle these types of requests because I think we're going to see more of them. Back to the the application itself, I, I think I have, I have changed my opinion because I, you're investing your dollars on this. And so you believe this diversity of housing, this mix will work really well. It's a micro community is really how I, I, I think with a challenging piece of dirt, it would be easy just to do the same old we've seen all over the place. And so the fact that you think that this could be successful for our community, and you've best of the time in the feedback from our, our neighbors, who I hold their opinion in high regard, seem to, for the most part, appreciate what you're trying to accomplish. I think I'm going to be supportive. Just want to commend you and the neighbors for working as collaborative as you can. You know, it's, if it was easy, it would just always be the way. It takes time and challenge and effort, and I appreciate you and the neighbors.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'm going to probably fall outside of the group on this one. You know, for me, the, the bar just wasn't met. I needed a lot more legwork done here to get comfortable. You know, I had requested several times comparison with the R eight standard. I feel it took a long time to get that. And I kind of view, to Councilman Borden's point, I do view it as a trade off. I view it that there's a trade off between innovative design and a deviation from our dimensional standards. And I don't feel that the design was sufficiently innovative to justify the extreme deviations, I believe, from our normal dimensional standards. So that's one piece for me. And without, I think, a lot more work in terms of the design and frankly, even additional updated elevations. Like, I appreciate getting the update on the single family elevations, but I took issue with many of the elevations and didn't see any updates. And for me, the bar was just not met in terms of knowing that we're leaving kind of our eight land and giving a PUD and that we're going to get truly innovative, beautiful design. At the end of the day, I didn't feel that that legwork was met to prove that. And so for me, I, in the absence of that, default to assuming that the purpose of the PUD is to increase the density. And I feel that that was the primary purpose. So it doesn't mean I couldn't have gotten there, but I just, for me on these going forward, I'm going to need, you know, those comparison charts upfront and and a lot more of that legwork done to meet the bar for me to grant a PUD.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Actually, by this point, I have really good clarity on my thoughts on this. But, you know, we have a couple layers now of conditions to consider. And in addition to that, of course, we're going to talk about what's most important for our and most beneficial to our community as well as what we want to be here for a very long time. And I really lean more towards sharing the same concerns as Councilwoman Schrader. And I, I'm not going to reiterate all of those because I think you have, have understanding of of what the concerns are. But specifically, I, I've had a really hard time. If, if, if you're presenting a unique development to our community, giving us a vision is a really important part of it. And I, I, I just struggled with getting that vision from you that was, obviously, you know, we, we're, we would be approving a plat and potentially a concept plan with the DA, but, you know, you're not obligated to provide elevations to us. You're not obligated to show us what you will specifically use. But it certainly does help us as we get questions from the public about what we saw when we said okay to a project that was really super unique. So I don't know where I, I want to leave that in terms of whether, at this point, I'm not sure I a hundred percent would, would encourage asking for more information and continuing this so that we can put it into something that is different. If, if my fellow, if there's enough support from my fellow counsel, then I'm glad for your success at this point in time. I, I can't be in an agreement with this particular application.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I appreciate all the conversation that we're having and in insight and inputs. It's always valuable. Appreciate the work of, of the community members who put so much time and effort. And, and Sally, Ms. Carpenter left and probably three generations, but tell her, you know, it's not a win-loss type of situation that we're in. And the key takeaway is you made a difference. All the people who are here at the hearing a couple weeks ago, the people who went to the meetings there, you made a difference. And that's what we want to have. We want to make things better wherever possible. Let's make them better. And I, I think that's, that's the good thing about it. So the, this site does have its challenges. It, it had some certain things baked into this particular piece of property that we had to deal with, that workaround, and it makes sense that a PUD was used here. You know, is it perfect? Do we like everything about it? No, but it's, it's workable. I love the fact that there is a transition and how you feathered, your term feathered out that, you know, we get a lot of places where we have the neighbors come and it's not a one to one lot line match necessarily. And you get three houses up against one and people are upset. You guys put some effort into that to what, plus the easement that was there, which, you know, we kind of take for granted, but to reroute that, and that is a waterway that impacts the development. It really limits and modifies what you can do up against it. And I think you used it well, though, to make it work. So I, I appreciate the effort that's gone into that. And and one other thing, Mr. Mayor, I want to, I want to mention, and this might be taken political, but, you know, you use the library, brand new library there, right there at that Orchard Park. You know, libraries are more about books. They're about community and how we can use them, and everyone benefits from them. So there I said it, I support our libraries. But it's, it's something that that's what they're there for. And I really appreciate Nick in opening that up and having you guys able to have those meetings and whatnot. So that's, that's a good thing. So anyway, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm supportive of this. I think a lot of folks put a lot of time and effort into it. And I think we have a project that we can say is quality, and I'm excited to see how it develops.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Move we close the public hearing on item nine H 2022 0027.
Second the motion.
The motion is second to close the public hearing is there discussion? If no, I'm favoring saying that by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse name is having the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
In light of the, the discussion amongst my colleagues here, I'll make a motion to approve H 2022 0027 with the updated elevations and adjustments as presented and and addressed in the staff report of March 21, 2023.
Mr. Mayor, second the motion and discussion for discussion.
I have a motion, a second discussion, Councilman Hoagland.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I support the motion, but I just wanted to follow up for, to, to the maker of the motion about the no parking request on Bergman and Director and having the no parking as it was designated on the curves of the applicant's presentation. I didn't know if you wanted to include that in the motion.
Both of those.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I would recommend you include Arles as well. Up to you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there is a condition of approval currently, number eight, that states the applicant should coordinate with ACHD on installing no parking signs on the public streets where the S or ninety degree curves are located, i.e. Bergman Avenue, North Arctic Fox Way and North Arles Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Schrader.
No.
Overton.
Yes.
Pro.
No.
Governor.
Aye.
Borden.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye. Our eyes, two nays, and the motion is agreed to. Uh, counsel, let's go ahead and take a ten minute break and try to resume at eight o'clock, so technically twelve minute break. Uh, council, let's go ahead and take a ten-minute break and try to resume at eight o'clock, so technically twelve-minute break. Go ahead and make our way back from our recess. Our next item up this evening is a item ten, public hearing for Meridian Ozy Apartments. Oz Apartments, I assume, H twenty-two zero two-two dash zero zero seven-three. Open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In my presentation up here, uh, the next application before you tonight is a request for a development agreement modification and a conditional use permit. Oops, I'm still not on the right slides. Just a moment. There we go. Uh, this site consists of two-point-three-nine acres of land. It's owned R forty, and it's located at one-four-seven-five East Franklin Road, off the southwest corner of Franklin and Locust Grove Roads. Little history on this property. It was annexed with an R forty zoning district back in nineteen ninety-nine with a development agreement that includes a concept plan for a ninety-six-unit multifamily residential development on the subject property and the adjoining property to the east that's now owned by A C H D containing a drainage facility. A conditional use permit was also approved for a multifamily development, which has since expired. And this is the concept plan that I just referenced on the left here. And then this is the proposed plan on the right. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation for this property is mixed-use community. A modification to the existing development agreement for Cobblestone Village is proposed to remove the subject property from the agreement and enter into a new agreement for the proposed development. This is being done because the abutting property now owned by A C H D is not part of the development plan. The applicant proposes to update the concept plan in the agreement consistent with the development plan proposed with the concurrent conditional use permit application. Staff recommends the provisions pertaining to outside lighting, perimeter fencing, and drainage be carried over to the new agreement. New provisions are recommended requiring a future development to be generally consistent with the development plans proposed with this application and vehicular and pedestrian connectivity to be provided to the property to the south for future interconnectivity. A conditional use permit is proposed for a sixty-unit multifamily residential development on two-point-three-nine acres of land in the R forty zoning district at a gross density of twenty-five units per acre. Five twelve-plex structures are proposed with a mix of one-bedroom, thirty of those, and two-bedroom, again, thirty of those units. Access is proposed via South Locust Grove Road. No access is proposed or allowed via East Franklin Road. Because this property and the property to the south is designated mixed-use community, and no local street access exists to this site or the adjacent property, staff recommends a cross-access ingress egress easement and driveway with a pedestrian walkway is provided to the property to the south for future interconnectivity. Off-street, a parking is proposed in accord with U D C standards with three extra spaces. Compliance with the specific use standards for multifamily residential developments is required, which includes standards for open space, private and common, and site amenities. A minimum of eighty square feet of private open space is proposed for each unit as required. A minimum of thirteen thousand five hundred square feet or point-three-one of an acre of qualified open space is required to be provided. A total of fourteen thousand four hundred and sixteen square feet or point-three-three acre is proposed, exceeding the minimum standards by nine hundred and sixteen square feet. Based on the number of units, a minimum of three qualified site amenities are required from each category, the quality of life, open space, and recreation. The applicant proposes enclosed bike storage, a community garden, and a children's playground from each category. A pathway along the perimeter of the development was originally proposed, but was removed due to site constraints. Conceptual building elevations and perspectives were submitted as shown for the proposed three-story structures. Building materials consist of fiber cement panels between the windows, stucco, and synthetic wood cladding in neutral colors. Final design of all structures is required to comply with the design standards in the architectural standards manual. The commission recommended approval of the proposed conditional use permit. I'll go through a summary of the commission public hearing. Jory Delgado, the applicant's representative testified in favor, and Witherell and Lindsay Uche, I apologize if I misspelled or mispronounced your name, commented on the application, and written testimony was received from Travis Perrin, uh, representing Intermountain Wood Products. He is in opposition to the application. Key issues of discussion discussion by the commission are as follows. Intermountain Wood Products that exist three parcels to the south has safety concerns due to the proximity of the proposed access by a Locust Grove to the Locust Grove Franklin Road intersection and conflicts between the residential traffic from their proposed development and their tractor trailers and trucks that come and go from their distribution center multiple times per day and concerns with safety and trespassing from future residents on their property. Relocating the trash enclosure from the southwest corner of the development, privacy fencing along the southern boundary, public safety concerns with this development surrounding an A C H D drainage facility, and limited access from Locust Grove Road. The commission made the following changes to the staff's recommendation, and they modified D A provision one A to encourage council to determine if the proposed density was appropriate for this property. The commission modified D A provision one D to have the applicant explore other fencing options along the west boundary and the A C H D drainage facility to mitigate impacts from the industrial uses and the existing barbed wire fence around the A C H D property. Commission modified condition A N to relocate the trash enclosure in the southwest corner to a more appropriate location as determined by Republic Services. There are no outstanding issues for council tonight on this application. Written testimony has been received from Jory Delgado, the applicant's representative, and she is in agreement with the conditions in the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions. Oh, one thing I would like to add, um, I I kind of touched on this, but this property is entitled with R forty zoning and a development agreement for, like I said, more units than they're proposing. So I did just want to want to touch on that, and Bill and Mary can answer any questions you may have on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonya. Council, any questions for staff?
Councilman Caver.
I'll start with you, and then I may pivot to Mr. Mary. So one, talk about the history, and this may be my first time I get to say it. This thing was annexed when I was in high school, so that's kind of neat. Maybe the first of many times we'll hear this over the next couple of years. So help me understand annex in, and the highway district builds a drain while still having the residential annexation. That that was the process back then, or that they were able eligible to do that? Help me understand how property owner annexes in, and the highway district builds a drain, and now they want to come back and do residential. I'm sure I just I'm missing pieces in this game of Mad Libs.
Well, um, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Cavan or council, um, you know, I'm not sure if I'm stating the obvious or missing your point of your question, but um, they were they were entitled with the multifamily development. They let their conditional use permit expire. After that time, A C H D came in and and bought a large corner of that property, left them with an L-shaped, and that's all they have left, and it's a pretty constrained site to develop now. But they are entitled with the zoning, you know, they already have that entitled. And with the development agreement with the concept plan. Granted, the the proposed development is not consistent with their their concept plan, but that is why they're proposing a modification, and there's no way feasibly for the applicant to develop consistent with their concept plan. So anyway, did I answer your question or not? Or did I just state the obvious?
You you answered only question that I asked, and then you answered the next question I was going.
Oh, good.
Appreciate for anticipating.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
I I just want to say I was pretty impressed with that response, considering she was in grade school when this was annexed.
We'll play Mr. President.
Council, additional questions for staff? Okay, there's the applicant. Online or?
Good evening. My name is Jory Delgado. I'm with Realm Venture Group, uh, one-one-zero-nine West Main Street, Boise, Idaho. I think that Sonya did a really good job with the staff report, and as she mentioned, after reviewing all the conditions that were placed on this application, we are in agreement with all of the conditions that are in place. One thing I would like to know about the fencing around the A C H D drainage facility. Uh, it did come up by the neighbors at la at the last planning and zoning hearing that there were some safety concerns about the type of fence that is currently there, which is uh, just a chain-link fence, six feet high with barbed wire around the top of it. Uh, we do intend to change that, and we have actually changed that to an eight-foot fence. Um, and we're gonna do an eight-foot vinyl fence, so it's fully enclosed. Vinyl fences obviously are not as easy to climb as chain-link fences, so I think that it kind of addresses some of those safety issues that the neighbors might have had, and we're also going to continue that vinyl fencing around the rest of the property too, just to match that. But outside of those safety concerns for the fence from that neighbor, I also just want to touch on Intermountain. Their issue potentially of the traffic coming in and out of the subdivision. There, again, there's we're kind of constrained with this piece of property. There's not a lot of ways that we can come in and out. And I know that we tried an entrance in and out on Franklin. We tried keeping them both open, and it's it's just there's not really like this. This just happened to be the best option for us, and we do have plans to put to make this a forced right turn. So we will have a concrete barrier in here that forces that right turn. So we will have a concrete barrier in here that forces that right turn so that people aren't trying to go across all four of those lanes or into the center divider. So we're going to do what we can to force that right turn and stripe it and put signage. But again, that's, that's all we can do to address that safety issue. Other than that, I don't have any new comments, so I'm open for questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
Yes, Ms. Delgado, so A C H D would not even allow a right-in, right-out on Franklin Road?
So we were told no entrance or exit on that and we tried it, but it did come back that we were not allowed to use Franklin at all. So we are now putting a berm on that side so that it's going to be fully landscaped and look more presentable from that side of the road. So people know that they can't enter and exit on that side and we will be removing that curb cut on that side that's currently there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Sonya.
Excuse me, I would just like to clarify with the applicant on the record. She mentioned that an eight-foot tall vinyl fence was proposed. Our city code restricts the fencing height in the residential districts to six feet. So they would neither need to provide a six-foot fence or they could request alternative compliance. I'm not sure that we'd have any issue with alternative compliance given the drainage facility, you know, that way. But um, Mr. Overton might have some comments on that from a police background if he would feel that would be appropriate or not. But anyway, just wanted to mention that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Can you just walk us through the distribution of the parking on the site?
Yes, so we have parking spaces in between for each of the buildings on this side as well as the row of parking in front of each building. And all of the parking spaces along the fronts are all covered parking spaces. I believe we have sixty-one covered parking spaces total. And the reasoning for pushing all of our additional parking over here, which would essentially be our guest parking, is that it was hard for us to have parking right up here along the front of Locust Grove when this is going to be our in and out. So we, after trying to lay out the buildings in numerous different ways just because of the constraints of the shape of this property, the parking kind of felt best back here. But again, these are all self-parked for the actual buildings in front of them. So these residents won't have to be walking back here. They will have a dedicated spot with their unit numbers on them and a designated additional space if possible, and then this will just be an overflow. And if we could, we would put some parking up here and maybe shift the buildings a little bit, but I don't feel that parking right along there is probably is best.
Got it. Okay, so it's all self-parked around the buildings and then it's really, this is, you're saying overflow. So will people have to pay extra for that dedicated space? Or you're confirming that you will dedicate a space to every unit?
Every unit will have a dedicated space. Since we aren't providing actual garages, these are going to be covered carports that will have their unit number associated with it when they sign a rental agreement.
Gotcha. And then I assume there is no parking along this little kind of drive aisle?
This, I'm not sure if you're able to see my mouse, but there's not any parking. All the parking is along the buildings.
Okay, got it.
The perimeter of it is all landscape buffer.
Okay.
And then on the bottom portion of the property to the south, that's where we're going to be putting the easement for a future connectivity that was noted in the conditions for any future developments that happen to go there so that we could share the driveway. And that's our main reasoning for putting the buildings on that side of the property. I know it's not ideal to have them next to the A C H D drainage facility, but that works out well if there is, happens to be a property developed next to us and then we can share a drive aisle.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
It was difficult to tell from the drawings if there is a dedicated walkway from the building farthest from the grassy area on the north to that common area. Would, would folks be walking through the parking lot to get there? Or is there some sort of pathway on the north and east sides of the buildings where you see all the landscaping?
So we do have a pathway along the fronts of the buildings. So between the front of the building and the parking, there is a sidewalk there. Our drawings are hard to see that and I was hoping that we could have some better renderings of that prior to this, but I wasn't able to get them. We did have to remove our walkway along the A C H D drainage facility along the back. So we are using the front walkway of the building as the access to that common area from all the buildings. And it is a little bit hard to see, but these back units do have a small walkway back there that does allow them to get to their set of stairs.
Council, additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Quirk, can we have anybody sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did, for Suzanne Witherell.
Good evening, Anna. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. And Witherell, two one five South Locust Grove Road. I don't know where to begin with this one. I'm, I'm, I would have loved to have taken my concern to the developer. But I went to both of the neighborhood meetings. I was the only one that showed up other than a representative from the Pumas factory across the road. I was the only one there. I understand that city staff, sorry, I'm a little nervous. City staff was told that the neighbors didn't show up. That was kind of disrespectful. We're hoping to, to meet with her, to see her tonight. She's not here. I'd like to meet this person or developer. To have some of my concerns addressed by the developer. Hasn't happened. I do appreciate that there will be a vinyl fence around this wonderful drainage thing. Around the front, a thirteen-year-old with a bolt cutter can get in. There will be thirteen-year-olds with bolt cutters there. There are bolt cutters, they're thirteen-year-olds in the neighborhood. Not all of them are well behaved. Most are. But it is still a drowning. Catcher. It is a hazard to children on that road. There's nowhere for them to go. You can't fit some off. And who lives in one and two-bedroom apartments? Not families with mature children. Small children. Section eight possibly. I don't think the police will be happy with that. Again, I'd like to take some of my concerns to the developer. But I only have you. The location of three-story apartment buildings. It sticks out like a sore thumb on that, that corner. Whereas industrial type development like is on the twenty-six acres behind. And like the, the wholesale wood people. They would fit in, but you put a three-story tiny apartments crammed in there. I mean, I just, the only thing missing here is the shoehorn. That, no, I'm sorry. I, I, this just gives me nightmares thinking about it. Not to mention how many are going to be coming along the, what's supposed to be a twenty-foot easement between the residential and the industrial, light industrial. It's not twenty, but it's still. They can get on there, they can just kind of walk right into my property from beyond. There's no security there. I've lived there for forty-five years. I mean, I really don't want to put bars on my doors and windows at night. That's not Meridian. That's not the Meridian I know. Not the Meridian I moved to. It may have to be the Meridian I leave, move from. I would hate for that to happen. I've got some great neighbors to the north of me. The, the wood wholesalers are great neighbors. Which is something not everyone can say. But my concerns, gentlemen, I just will leave with you. Because if I go on and on, we'll be here all night.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Councilman Caver.
Yes, I've got a couple of questions, if you may, and I appreciate you coming and giving us your testimony tonight. And no need to be nervous, we're, we're all neighbors here and it's not a big deal.
Well, this isn't my first rodeo either.
Fair enough. So here's the second rodeos and beyond. Like, my question for you is, you had mentioned that you went to the neighborhood meetings.
Yes.
But that the applicant told staff that nobody showed.
Yeah.
But then you also said that you wish that you had a chance to voice your concerns to the applicant.
Right.
Did you not feel that you had the opportunity to do that at the two neighborhood meetings or you?
There would not, I was the only one there. I'm standing here in front of a backhoe and a vacant building. And I'm it. Nobody's there, just me.
Council.
I mean, I could talk to the building, but it doesn't talk back.
Got it. So what I'm, what I'm hearing is you, what you're seeing is you went to two neighborhood meetings and from your opinion, the applicant wasn't there. And that's why you didn't have anyone to talk to. So the applicant didn't feel, say anybody was there and you didn't see the applicant and so therefore you weren't able to convey your feelings.
Right, so it's, it's kind of like.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Caver.
It, it feels a little bit, a bit like that, that you, it sound, and again, we'll, I'm sure we'll hear from the applicant on this. I just want to get some clarity about why you didn't feel you had the opportunity to convey your concerns to the applicant and the reason you weren't able to do that is because they weren't there.
That's, yeah, right.
Got it. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Councilman Overton.
Mr. Mayor, that was the exact same question I was going to ask.
Mr. Mayor.
He reads like a mighty python.
Yeah, Councilman Holland.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am, I have, I have a softball question for you. Okay.
Just get, get in front of the microphones, please.
There you go. Um, so you've lived there forty-five years. Do you know Gene and Bernadine Presley?
Yes.
Okay, they're, they're, they're still around, so just wanted to.
Well, tell them hello for it.
I will. Thank you.
That's the better question.
Anyone else sign up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize if I mispronounce this as well, but Lindsay Uchi.
Good evening. If you say your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lindsay Uachi. I live at thirteen seventy-six West Whitehall Drive.
Those Councilwoman Schrader can hear for certain.
Okay. First and foremost, thank you to the Planning Department for the ease of access and transparency on the ongoing developments in our city. And to Mayor Simpson and the City Council for providing the opportunity to voice concerns about proposed developments. The proposed development Meridian Ozzy Apartments does not meet, barely meets, and misrepresented meeting several of the standards put forth by Meridian officials who intended to develop a premier community. The current development does not meet the standards for open space and buffering. It is not compliant with sidewalk requirements. It is not compliant with setback requirements. A representative was not present at any of the three rescheduled neighborhood meetings. The applicant misrepresented having no input from neighboring landowners. The submitted record of survey dated October twenty-second marks a house which was demolished three months prior. Standards set by our city officials have been consistently disregarded entirely or met at an extreme minimum. In addition to the disregard for standards, I would also like to address the industrial buffer on the western edge of the development. There is no physical barrier on the southern edge of the landscape buffer. The tree-lined zone will allow unimpeded access to the new one hundred and eighty northern neighbors into the backyards of the single-family homes. Of larger impact, I urge the council to be open-minded when considering the safety and well-being of the proposed renters who will have only one way to access their homes. Moving into a parking area which has merely three spots above the minimum requirement. The residents will further have no option for street parking within a quarter mile. Should any one of the sixty proposed households have three guests, a resident will not be able to park within a reasonable distance of his or her home. Should a vehicle accident or an emergency vehicle be parked near the sole entrance and exit, there would be no access out of the development. What would the impact in the event of a fire or a serious crime? The single right-in, right-out onto Locust Grove creates enormous traffic and safety concern. If a law-abiding citizen is intending to travel east towards Eagle Road, the only legal path would require one to one and a half miles of additional travel. I would ask the council to consider realistically if this will be regularly abided by and if not, consider the road conditions created by motorists attempting an illegal left-hand turn out of the complex and into a small section of a turning lane, which is also being used by northbound traffic to turn into the apartments. Is this a reasonable risk that you can stand by allowing at a major arterial intersection? The mission, visions, and values put forth by the city of Meridian states a dedication to a more vibrant, livable, and connected city. Does this development create more vibrance? Does it create a higher standard of livability? Does it create more connectivity for the residents, landowners, and business owners of Meridian? Before you make up your mind, I urge you, please follow your gut feeling. I acknowledge that this is a difficult parcel to develop, but there is a better way than allowing five three-story apartment buildings to be wedged behind a barbed wire fence surrounding a drainage pond with only one way out. I sincerely appreciate Mayor Simpson and the council's valuable time and very strong consideration to upholding the standards which protect Meridian.
Thank you, Lindsay. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Lindsay, did you say there were three meetings that were rescheduled and the applicant, or the applicant was never there?
It was rescheduled twice, so there was a total of three meetings and the applicant was never present.
At any of the meetings?
Correct.
Okay, and I didn't catch where you, you live close and?
I own the property directly south, one eight five South Locust Grove.
Are you familiar with the traffic as it flows currently out of the apartments across the street, the Shadow Creek apartment?
Yes.
Okay, I'll talk about that later.
Okay.
Council, any additional questions? Thank you. And that's everyone who's signed up. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward and present testimony on this item? Or if you're online, use the raise your hand feature.
Mr. Mayor.
See no one. Councilman Borton.
Several things don't make sense in this application, but one is, how does A C H D acquire a portion of this property without a DA modification to allow it to put the drainage? I mean, there's got to be prior public hearing context where the things we're wrestling with right now would come up as part of approving a modification to a nineteen ninety-nine DA that wouldn't also address this remnant parcel. Because we would have said in ninety-nine, what in the heck are we going to do with the remnant parcel? So what did we say back then? That gave council comfort that we're missing today.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, council, I, I'm not sure that the city was ever asked. I, I, it may have been, but I have a feeling it was possibly a taking or just a purchase of land and.
But.
I'm not aware of anything with the city if there was.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
In my.
Am I incorrect that procedurally they should have, they should have applied to modify a DA to do what they did? And that would have brought all this to light? I mean, how do they, how do they acquire, how do they even split off that parcel to then?
Oh, I.
Put it without city approval? I mean, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Question, Joe, for Bill, I'm, I'm really not sure if held to that same. I mean, it, it would seem it's a legal agreement between the city and the applicant that this is how the property is going to develop, and it's not.
You can't.
I agree.
You can't put, you can't put stormwater drainage facilities in a R forty.
Yeah, it, it is public, public infrastructure, infrastructure improvements, which may fall outside of that. I'm not sure.
Okay, thanks.
Well, we have three attorneys in the room who hold no land use. I'm sure that that's at least three thousand dollar question. After we debate it. Oh, sorry.
I don't have an answer, I just have a question.
Yeah. Council, further.
Council, uh, Mayor, council, if I can just speak to that point a little bit. Don't have a, I don't know the specifics, it's before, before my time, obviously, but typically ACHD, when they're doing road projects, they do coordinate with the city, as you're aware. And I don't know who was the planner at the time that, that coordinated on that intersection improvement. But there's a couple of things to keep in mind here. Uh, I know, I wish Kyle was here tonight because he has a lot of input on the Five Mile Creek and this. I think if you look at the aesthetics of the area, you can see that it does almost look like a wetland or tries to look more natural than majority of their stormwater retention facilities minus the chain link fence with barbed wire. But I think that was the intent here, is that we were trying to get something attractive, and we were trying to make it part of an integrated open space along that creek. Uh, so that's probably one component of it, but the second part of that is typically when ACHD acquires a property, if they don't deem that they necessarily need all the property, they'll do a record survey, and they'll grab the portion that they want to purchase, and then they leave the remnant piece out. But to your point, the DA doesn't go away. Uh, it, it does run with the land, and as soon as they assume that, presumably, you, you would say, yes, you're in, you should have come back to the city. So I don't know if ACHD worked with city staff when they acquired that to make those improvements so that it could enhance the creek area. I wish I had more information on that for you, but that's a speculation on my part.
Mr. Mayor, I was just made aware that Kyle from Big Works is online, so he may have some answers to that question.
Well, and we also have another phone friend with, uh, Ms. Inselman from ACHD on the line who may have be able to shed some light on their normal process if, when they come on these issues.
Mr. Mayor, while we see who pops up, the, the reason for that question is in the, in the normal sense, the applicant could take this concept plan and go pull a permit and they've got zoning and entitlements and go try and get it built. But they never could have, even if they wanted to, so.
Well, Mr. Radic, you, he is there with his hand raised. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to raise my hand. I, uh, can you hear me?
You're up now.
Okay, well, um, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, my only knowledge of the, of the little pond project is I believe it was done, uh, in conjunction with the Franklin Road ACHD project. And that was done in two thousand and four, and that's before I started working here, so I really don't have any, any knowledge of what happened there.
Mr. Mayor, this is, yeah, Kristi Inselman with Ada County Highway District. Um, I, I don't have any additional information on this corner. I know it's fairly typical. We have to accommodate the drainage, um, from the roadway when we do the roadway expansion projects. Um, and we do, we do have some that we do on the corner as far as the process. Um, similar to, um, Kyle, I, pre my time, so I'm not really sure what process was, um, included to develop that.
Kristi, do you have a process that you would normally, you say this was to be done tomorrow? Do you know how ACHD would go about implementing this in this situation?
Um, my, my best guess, Mr. Mayor, would be coordination with the city staff. Um, I don't, I'm long-range planning. I don't work on the development of the, um, individual projects, um, but I do know that city staff and ACHD work together closely on all of our projects, and they sit on all of our project teams. So they would, um, all would be heavily involved into what process would need to occur. Um, to, to, uh, landscape and to, uh, acquire land for drainage facilities.
Okay, thank you, Kristi.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Punted to legal with the question being, in, again, a more traditional sense, a council may elect to deny a DA modification because the original existing concept plan is preferred. So build what's already, already allowed to build and on we go. In this case, are we somehow hamstrung to act on a DA when the original concept plan itself is already not viable?
So, Mr. Mayor, remember, is the council, no, you're, you're still, you still have discretion on, on not granting this development agreement modification. Yeah, I, I, I couldn't tell you, and I don't recall a conversation regarding this parcel. But in looking at the staff report, and I just want to make sure with Bill and Sonia, the ACHD parcel is a separately owned parcel that's not part of this development agreement any longer? Is that correct?
Mr. Ma, Mayor, um, Mr. Mayor, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
On ACHD.
So the conflict you have that I think is the concern here is that remnant part, that parcel, that's the remnant parcel. So that was taken out, and that was separated out of this, out of the original DA, but nobody altered the original DA. So the R forty zoning, because it was supposed to incorporate that entire parcel, never got changed. That's why the ninety-six units are still listed as the viable, or as the DA allowed, uh, uh, development. But because clearly things have changed, and the property size and location and the access and all those things have changed, the council doesn't have to agree to this particular one. And I agree with you, it is slightly different because normally, you're correct. The reason the council doesn't agree with DA is they want them to build what they'd already been provided. Here, they can't build what was provided in the existing DA, nor can they, nor do they, could you have to agree that they could build this? They could build something different, you know? Again, there are other issues that were raised, but certainly you don't, you do have the discretion to still say, no, even what you're proposing isn't adequate for this, based on the safety and some of the other concerns you've heard.
Thank you. Um, are we ready to hear from the applicant for final comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Just to comment, I'm sure that the applicant understands how important, but just to underscore how important it is for the applicant and their final comments to address that the neighbors feel that the developer has not met with them, which is one of our requirements and extremely important for us.
Agreed. Thank you, Councilwoman Schrader. Alado?
I would like to address, uh, the two neighbors that spoke about the neighborhood meetings. Uh, this came up during the planning and zoning as well. Um, we did have multiple neighborhood meetings, and I waited probably over an hour for anybody to show up. Um, granted, there's not a long, uh, neighborhood list that needed to be sent out, so I knew I was only waiting for a few people. So I made sure that I waited an extended period of time for those individuals to show up. Uh, the first meeting was actually when the tenants of the house still lived there. Uh, so I do know that they were there for that meeting too, as was I. So I, I'm not sure, I don't know if it was a, um, passing where we missed, or if they came after the meeting was ending, but I can say that I was there for at least an hour each time. And I can try to pull, if Sonia doesn't have those, um, in her file, the dates and times of the beginning of the meeting and the end of them, and send those in to you guys, and the list of people that was, that it was sent to each time. Uh, but other than that, that's the only, um, way that I could address their comments on that. And then as far as the safety for the ACHD drainage facility, we are open for any suggestions around that. We do want it to be as safe as possible for the residents there, and, uh, proposing the larger fence was what our first, our first instinct was, just so that people weren't able to climb over it. Um, and there wasn't easy access into it, but other than that, um, we're open for suggestions on safety measures to take, uh, to keep people out of that.
Thank you, council. Additional questions, comments, follow-up with the applicant? Councilman Cavan.
Mr. Mayor. Um, so your, your comments said that this also came up at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is, is that correct? That, that the concern about the neighbors not being in communication with you, is that, was that accurate?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up?
Same too.
Councilman Cavan.
In, in light of that, did, did you make any effort after the Planning and Zoning Commission to then connect with those residents to hear their concerns?
Um, I did not, uh, but I do, I have spoken with Lindsay prior, and I know that she noted that, um, I noted that I hadn't spoken with her, which I have spoken to her prior to the planning and zoning meeting. I had not spoken with Ann. Um, I, I didn't know prior to that that she had any, uh, any concerns regarding this project. I had only heard from Lindsay. Uh, but again, I'm open to hearing all of her safety concerns for that ACHD drainage facility that she does have, and I understand those. And like I said, we are open for any suggestions to help meet her comments and concerns about that.
Councilman Cavan.
So I, I appreciate that you, you heard from neighbors that they were concerned. And it, and again, it sounds like that you heard that they were frustrated that they hadn't been able to connect with you. And so again, I guess a real simple question is then, why did you choose to not reach out to them?
I figured that by the time we came back to city council that I would be able to address some of these issues better, but again, a lot of it has to do with ACHD drainage.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
You know, we run into this occasionally, and thankfully not that much, where it's kind of a he said, she said on neighborhood meetings, taking place, not taking place, but it's not just one person, it's two people that say they haven't had that meeting, and that's just really, um, unacceptable. And I wonder, you know, is this a situation where we need to have, like, planning staff or the city clerk organize a meeting at city hall to make sure that the process happens correctly? And everyone can agree on a date and show up. Um, but I just don't, I, it's, I'm like having an allergic reaction to even considering moving forward on an application where the neighborhood meetings have not taken place, or possibly have not taken place. And so yeah, I, I just want to, I'm just talking out loud, but I'm, you know, I'm sort of struggling here. Maybe miscommunication, maybe things happen, but I, I want to make sure that that process happens.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
I'd like to absolutely back up everything Councilman Schrader just said. I agree. It, it seems pretty unacceptable in this state and time that we're having those type of issues, and when they're, the opportunities presented at the planning and zoning meeting, it still doesn't happen. And here we sit tonight, and the, the neighbors still haven't had a chance to have that talk. Secondarily, um, I live fairly close to this. And currently you have the Shadow, or Shallow Creek Apartments across the street. One way in, one way out, exactly what this is gonna be. Probably almost similar densities. Every day, traffic stacks coming out of that one way in. And because ACHD runs a, uh, traffic barrier back, we have vehicles, because I've had their headlights head-on on my lane. They can only turn right, right in, right out, but they turn left and drive in opposing traffic lanes until they can get far enough over to get onto Locust Grove. That one, combined with what this would do, would be extremely terrible traffic congestion that close to that intersection. Because you've got two of them, high density coming right before that intersection, and Locust Grove is getting busier and busier as we continue to grow. I don't think this is a good location for that. I think the one-way in is, is not acceptable. Um, this just looks like it's, it's a hazard, and I try to remember when this might have been built, and I do think I do know when this ACHD property was built. It's when a Locust Grove was rebuilt and regraded before the overpass was completed. That's when it was put in, because I lived by that and watched it happen. Um, and the fence went up because the deer were in there. So, uh, I have a little history with how that all happened. But I would not be supportive of moving forward on this application. There's just too many red flags right now.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holman.
And Mr. Overton was in college at the time, but anyway, I digress. Um, Mr. Mayor, there's a couple paths we could take on this, and, and, uh, like people to weigh in, you know, one is obviously, I, I think there has to be a cure to the neighborhood meetings not being, being held in some form or fashion, that we have to have people talking. But the other one is, I think there's a lot of unease about this project and the access. I am surprised, it's probably because it's very close to the intersection, but a right in, right out, just to have people be able to go north, but anyway, be that it is May. You know, I, I don't want to waste people's time by, we delay it and have another meeting in April after they meet. Or do we talk about this and have suggestions for the applicant on, of alternatives for, for this site? So I guess that's, that's kind of where I'm struggling, is what direction to go with something like this right now.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I was thinking about the exact same question as Council President Holman, and I think it would be beneficial if we continue the discussion about other elements of the application to give the, um, the applicant direction so that when they come back, we can answer all potential questions unless, um, well, you know, unless we hear a motion for denial or something along those lines, so, thank you.
Yeah, one of the questions I was gonna ask staff, throughout the zoning, what would you recommend for this location? Or throughout the existing entitlements? But with the changes of how, what would make sense here in this location from your standpoint now with where the city is or going in size?
Um, Mr. Mayor, council, um, the, the site is designated, um, mixed-use community. Um, office uses, I think, would be a nice use in this location. Personal services, maybe? Personal services.
Mayor, council, if I can, and I've, Sonia inherited this project from some, from other planners that actually pre-acted with it. So I, I want to step in a little bit because I have been part of other conversations that she hasn't been privy to. So as you recall, Intermountain Wood Products went through the comp plan change and did, did industrial. As part of that process, we did some analysis that said by us, approving this industrial, we're carving, we're reducing the mixed-use community designation in this area, which will make it harder for those properties to develop as such with the three land use types that we envision as part of the comprehensive plan. So when we've met with applicants, we've, we felt it should really go industrial. I mean, that's kind of the, that's what you have to the west of the project, and that seemed to be the national, the, the, the natural progression to do that. But of course, in order to change the plan and work with that, typically, we like to work with the neighbors. So when I've worked, when I've, when, and during the other pre-application meetings, we told them we may be able to support multifamily if you were to acquire more property to the south so that you can get cross-access, so you can get farther away from that intersection. So you can have, spread that density across a greater area, so you can get a more attractive site plan. Uh, one of the struggles that Planning and Zoning Commission had with this site was the fact of this density, and that's why it ended up in your lap tonight, because if you look at the original approval and this concept plan that's on the left here, that's fifteen dwelling units to the acre. And the reason why, you know, it, it's because there was more acreage. Well, ACHD came in, did a record survey, turned it, converted that pond to right-of-way, they own the property, and now we're left with the development where they want twenty-five dwelling units to the acre. And the applicant was asked at the Planning and Zoning Commission, can you do two-story? Can you go down to fifteen dwelling units to the acre and be consistent with the MUC designation? And if I'm not mistaken, I believe she testified, no, they needed to get this density. A long story short, in the, in the long, right now, we have. A long story short, in the in the long, right now, we have an entitlement, but to mayor's point, if if I were to take all that aside. And someone was to come to me and ask me what what we would think would be appropriate here to Sonya's point. I think office can work or a commercial component or potentially doing a comprehensive plan map amendment, changing that to industrial. And finishing out that that corner consistent with other developments in the area. At least what's happened to the west. I think this this council is aware that we need more industrial. And there's an opportunity to do that. Anyways, just giving you some feedback on some of the previous conversations.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I have a question for staff. So it's been a while since I've driven by and really closely paid attention to that corner of the intersection. Is there not some geographic geographical, that's the right word, geographical? It's nine o'clock limitations on that site as well. Doesn't it slope down because of the drainage? And is that going to limit what goes there?
Mayor, members of the council, you're you're correct. There are some some topography on the site, but the area that's able to develop. Could still be developed. It's it's not impacted by the topography. But you're to your point and to what the the resident said, the the pond is down and the three story apartments are going to be elevated above the pond site. So it is going to contribute to the height in the area for sure because of that elevation change.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
I don't know how I could move forward on this application. It sounds like the best long term solution. In short term, it it's difficult, but maybe appropriate to deny the. The CUP and the DA modification in light of these unique circumstances and invite and encourage the applicant to. You know, submit a rezone and and try and. Use this parcel in a in the way that its unique design will allow. You touched on some of those components and it's just not an R forty parcel now and. I know it it is technically, but. You know, never would get that zoning if it was presented today. It's just a very. Difficult situation, so I don't know how you go forward without. Quite frankly. They can't do what's originally approved, so I don't think they can. You should be encouraged to rezone it and. Have a different use there. Just being blunt and honest, so nobody wastes time.
And even going a step further. Hey, I'm not saying, you know, the access. Unless there's depend, you know, unless the access is somehow resolved to. Working with the neighbors to the south or back with ACHD for additional places, it just does not seem to be able to support. A use of this nature, and I I don't even know personally if putting a dentist's office and others is. For my commercial viability, right in, right out, only in this location is that. Maybe, you know, destination locations, but you still have to figure out how people are going to get in and where they're going to come from, and there's. That's just going to be a challenge.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Holland.
Yeah, you you know, when the talked about that drive aisle on the south. If the property of the south develops and let drive aisle would be expanded, and that's the the exit for that development. I mean, to Councilman Overton's point and his example of the other side, having that now you've got even more cars doing that. You just compound the problem, so. Yeah, for for what is being proposed, this site just doesn't work for that. I think that should be other uses, other plans, maybe if they do acquire more property to the south. Then we can look at something that was similar before. But again, access is, I I think always going to be an issue there, but that's just. This particular one just doesn't doesn't work for that particular site, and and I feel for the developers, it's a. What was left over, but. The same time, it's it is what it is, and we want to, like we said earlier, quality development and something that works, of course, so. I don't see that here.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Overton.
Kind of an out of box thinker because we are kind of saying something about shutting it down and trying to find an alternative way this can turn into something. Is there any way this could be moved to industrial and have any type of access back to the west? So it does not need Franklin or Locust Grove.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Overton, there is currently no access available to this site from the west. There may be some kind of agreement that could be worked out, but there's not an existing access.
Mayor, members of the council, if Bruce scared me, so. Caught me off guard here, so I was formulating a response for you. But essentially, when that development to the west went in, there was a DA provision for that landscape buffer to be put along. That buffer, so to Sonya's point, there would have to be some coordination between that industrial user and the owner of that common lot. To allow that access to occur. Just more and more history for you to digest. There's a lot happening in this area, as you know.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing on H twenty twenty two zero zero seven three.
A motion second to close the public hearing is in our discussion. If not, on favor seen by by Sanai. Goes opposed name, that's having the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Good, difficult conversation, difficult site. Well, we all want to get into what this. Is or could be, but. For today, it just seems to be clear what it's not, and this application's just what it's not. The reasons stated by the public and the staff and the staff report and fellow council members have all hit on the same concerns that. This requested modification and the CUP that goes with it just doesn't work. As presented, it's not in the best interest of the city, so I'm going to make a motion that we deny H twenty twenty two zero zero seven three.
Motion a second with attorney weighing in.
I I think I think there's enough on the record, but basically what I heard was the the. If the maker of the motion was basically denying it because again, the the site cannot be developed into this form either. So it wasn't because of the original agreement as we discussed earlier, but because it's this one doesn't work either for the size of the parcel. The location, the safety, all of that. Is that what I understood?
It included all the record.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, and Mr. Johnson did have to step out, Mr. Mayor, so I don't know if you wanted to call the roll on the motion.
I didn't know that was my, one of my other duties as assigned. As a case may be, I have a motion a second. Is there further discussion on the motion? If not, I will call the roll and I will start. Does it matter who I start with? Okay, I'm just gonna go down the line, Councilman Overton. Councilman Borden. Come back, Councilman Holland.
Hi.
Hi, Councilman Kaver.
Hi.
Councilman, Councilman Pro. Councilman Schrader.
Hi.
Hi, is there anybody that likes to change their vote?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
Do over, that would be an I.
Councilman changes his vote to an I, so that is six I, zero no's in the motion. Today is agreed to. Staff, best of luck. In working with the owners and neighbors to try to come up with something. That makes sense for this area, or maybe we can get ACHD to. Stage a couple of snowball trucks there with the facility if they need to purchase some more land for that. In the community, be great location. And I guess, so moving on, we will move to item eleven, public hearing for Millwood subdivision H two zero zero two zero two two dash zero zero eight nine. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments after Councilboard makes a comment.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
This is an application I've not seen, know nothing about, but I know that I'm. Recusing myself from it, certainly won't be participating in any part, haven't from day one and. Will remove myself from it, so thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will turn it over to Sonya for staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next applications before you are a request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. This site consists of four point one one acres of land, it's owned RUT in Ada County. And it's generally located south of East Victory Road and east of South Locust Grove Roads at nineteen seventy five East Victory Road. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is medium density residential, which calls for three to eight dwelling units per acre. Annexation of four point seven four acres of land with an R eight zoning district. For the development of sixteen new single family residential detached homes and retention of the existing home at a gross density of four point one four. Units per acre, consistent with the medium density residential future land use map designation. This property is part of a larger infill area surrounded by city annexed land that has not yet redeveloped. Existing home is required to connect to city water and sewer surface within sixty days of service becoming available. And disconnect from private service in accord with city code. Existing home will also need to be readdressed since it access will no longer be provided from Victory Road. All access, excuse me, all accessory structures will be removed from the site. The proposed preliminary plat is shown there on the left, consists of seventeen building lots and two common lots on four point one one acres of land. And the R eight zoning district. Proposed lots range in size from four thousand two hundred and forty five square feet, which is point ten acre. To six thousand seven hundred and ninety nine square feet, point one six of an acre. With a thirty four thousand seven hundred and six square foot or point eight acre lot where the existing home was proposed to remain. The subdivision is proposed to develop in one phase. Access is proposed via the extension of each East Richardson Street, a local street planned to stub to the west boundary of the site. With development of Teakwood subdivision. ACHD is requiring right of way to be dedicated, but the street not constructed for the future extension of Richardson. From the east side of Tamao Court to the east property line with future redevelopment of the property to the east. And that is this road right here. Access for the existing home should be taken solely from Tamao Court. Access via the easement from Victory should terminate except for emergency vehicle access only. And Ballard should be installed across the driveway to prohibit public access. So just a little more information on that, this property, as you can see here from the maps, does not have any street frontage on Victory Road. They do have an access easement that exists across the neighboring DeChambeau property. Because this site is below five acres in size, UDC standards for common open space and site amenities do not apply. However, the applicant is proposing a total of point five five of an acre or thirteen point five percent of common open space. Or the development consisting of point one eight of an acre of common area with a tot lot along the west boundary of the site. With a pathway that stubs to the west boundary. The landscape plan here on the right shows that area right here. This common lot abuts common area planned in Teakwood subdivision to the west. Staff is recommending the applicant coordinate with the developer of the adjacent property to not erect a fence in that location. So that the common areas can be joined to form a larger overall area. A segment of the city's multi-use pathway system is required along the northeast boundary of the site, along the eight mile lateral. Consistent with the pathways master plan. The Parks Department recommends the off-site. Bridge across the lateral is widened or a separate pedestrian bridge is constructed to accommodate the ten foot wide. Pathway within NMID's consent. In their easement with their consent, excuse me. So the. Property where the lateral is located along the northeast boundary there is within an easement, and it is also owned. Be simple by the irrigation district. Six conceptual building elevation photos were submitted as shown that demonstrate what future homes in this development will look like. A mix of single story and two story homes are proposed with a mix of building materials, including stone veneer accents and architectural elements. The commission recommended approval of the proposed application, and I'll go through a summary of the commission hearing. Todd Blakey, the applicant's representative testified in favor. No one testified in opposition. Specifically, Mary DeChambeau did testify on the application. I won't make a. Opinion whether it was in opposition or commenting, she can speak for herself, she's here tonight. Written testimony was received from Delaine McLafferty. Key issues of discussion were traffic concerns related to the proposed development, the access easement that exists across the DeChambeau property. To the east, objection to the existing home remaining on the property because it doesn't fit with the surrounding neighborhood. Request for the pathway along the east side of the development to be fenced off from the waterway and property to the east. Height of the homes along the east boundary of the development don't fit with the rest of the neighborhood. And concerns pertaining to light impacts from the development on the property to the east. The issues of discussion by the commission, transitional lot sizes on the west and south boundary. Continued use of the vehicular bridge as a pedestrian bridge. Relocation or elimination of one lot taking access from the common driveway in the southeast corner of the development. Mission changes to the staff recommendation were as follows, at staff's request, they included a provision in the development agreement. Or construction traffic for the redevelopment of this property to access the site via the future extension of Richardson Street. From the west, access via the existing easement from East Victory Road across the DeChambeau property is prohibited. A staff's request include a preliminary plat condition of approval for the final plat to be amended. Consistent with the lot configurations depicted on the revised common driveway exhibit in the staff report. The applicant's request, the commission included a development agreement provision to limit the homes on the southern lots to single story only. Commission struck condition two A, removing the requirement to lose lots along the west and south southern boundaries as recommended by staff. And they modified condition ten, which required coordination with the Parks Department to determine if the existing bridge can be used. For a pedestrian crossing. There are no outstanding issues for council tonight. A member of the Parks Department is here tonight. Maybe I might. He might be available online to comment on the on the bridge, thank you. Written testimony has been received since the last hearing from Monty Morgner and Mary DeChambeau. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Given this late hour, I apologize to ask ask for asking this. But would you mind go going over the key issues of discussion by the commission and the changes that they recommended? Using the slides that you referenced and actually show us the locations. So I get it in my mind's eye because it's a little more than usual for us to discuss if we choose to discuss these.
And Sonya, before you do that, Councilman Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for interrupting Councilwoman Pro. Mr. Mayor, something has come up, and if it's okay with you, I'd like to be excused from the meeting.
Please go take care of yourself. Thank you.
Sorry, excuse me, Dean. It always becomes very clear once you get one sentence out of your mouth. That was the commission changes to the staff recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Specifically, I'd like to have you show me, I struggle to see where the pedestrian bridge location is. And then the lot that was recommended to be removed on the south side, southeast corner. I I don't, I didn't identify which lot that was. I looked at all of the drawings, but couldn't figure it out, and then. Can a commission change number two to the staff report, they. See, they. They want to include a preliminary plat condition of approval for the final plat to be amended consistent with the lot configurations depicted on the revised common driveway exhibit. So if you could bring that exhibit up next and show show us specifically where that is.
Yes. This is the common driveway exhibit right here. Bill may need to help me with this. He actually presented a commission on this. There was. If if I recall, real, correct me if I'm wrong, there was four homes adjacent to the common driveway. And those needed to be reconfigured. On the plat, I believe. Is that correct? Thank you. And then it
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
So Sonya, this, this rendering that we're looking at here for the common driveway exhibit, those four lots are, there's a suggestion that those do not stay in that configuration. Is that what I'm understanding?
I apologize. This is the amended drawing this before you tonight, so it's been handled. Always gets a little mobulated sometimes when we tag team on these, so apologies. So let me back up here. I was just trying to look at my conditions. Originally, I had requested that they remove a lot from the west boundary and the southern boundary. And I was trying to remember if I asked for that to be in a certain location. Bill's saying I did not. So the, the intention there was just to provide a little larger lot sizes there to better transition to the existing neighborhood to the south and the neighborhood that has been approved to the west. And then the pedestrian bridge. So there's an existing bridge right here, if you can see my pointer, that provides access from the access easement across the DeChambeau property that I mentioned earlier to the existing home. So the pedestrian bridge would either be there with the vehicular. I personally don't think that the bridge is wide enough to accommodate vehicles and pedestrians. And I believe that was the opinion of the Parks Department. And so they had also said that it could be a separate pedestrian bridge. But I, they may be available online.
Here it's here.
Oh, he's back now. Thank you. So was, did I cover everything, Councilwoman Perro, or did I miss something?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
Thank you. Yes, mostly. Just two more quick clarifications. So that I understand the, whether you removed the recommendation or the commission's one recommended, striking the condition. The applicant did not remove a western or southern lot, right?
This is the original plan.
Okay.
They did not, no.
Okay. And then the pedestrian bridge existing that you pointed to, that is not on the subject property?
Uh, it is not, Ms. Perro. It is on the adjacent property that I mentioned earlier is owned by the NMID irrigation district. So it's kind of funky, you know, there's mostly those properties are in an easement, but this is in an easement and a, and a separate property. So this, this, this requirement for a pathway, I just might mention, is, is not intended to encourage trespass on the adjacent property. And I know that is a big concern. And, you know, I, I would maybe recommend council add that condition of approval, but if it's approved tonight, that the applicant install a, you know, this pathway ends here, no trespassing beyond this point sign, something to that effect might assist in that. It's meant to extend in the future when and if their property redevelops, but hold me for a while. Thank you.
Council on additional questions for staff? Then when the applicant likes to come forward.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, council members, for the record, Todd Lakey, address 141 East Carlton, Meridian Idaho, 83642. So bet that up, let me make sure I can go up and down here. Mayor and council members would like to, I guess, just start out by thanking staff for their analysis and their recommendation of approval. We, Sonya did a good job, especially with council member Perro's questions. I'm kind of walking through it. I'll, I'll just emphasize a few more things. And we do have our engineer here tonight in case you get out of the attorney's own and you go into the engineer's own on some of the technicalities. We do ask that you concur with the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission. We appreciated their recommendation of approval and their modifications, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But the main one being with us not being required to utilize open space, we incorporated the 13-plus percent open space into our design. And the only response we received from the owners to the south was to not include two-story homes on that southern boundary, which we asked to be incorporated into the recommendation as far as conditions. So that was included. And then we have the developer that is just in the process of, of doing their project to the west and didn't have any objection from them regarding lot size or configuration. So I think that was the basis for their decision not to require us to remove two lots. Coming down. Council members, the, the comprehensive plan, as was mentioned, calls for medium density in this location. And that's three to eight dwelling units per acre. We're proposing 16 new, but 17 total residential lots on 4.11 acres. So that's 4.16 dwelling units per acre. So we're at the low end of what the comprehensive plan calls for, for medium density. And I think that was another aspect of the planning and zoning commission's decision not to require us to remove lots because we already are at the low end of the comprehensive plan designation. In addition to the open space and the other things that I mentioned. So we, we can, we conform with the comprehensive plan future land use map. We're also essentially an infill project on kind of an odd-shaped lot that I, that is supported as staff analyzed and recommended under your comprehensive plan. We're also compatible with the surrounding zoning. We are immediately adjacent to the Teakwood, which is R8. We're proposing R8, and there's early other R8 and some R4 in the area. Teakwood is 33 lots on 7.4 acres, so there are 4.6 dwelling units per acre. So again, we're just less dense than the Teakwood subdivision. And we will be connecting, as was mentioned, via Richardson Street. Last I looked at the Google map, it looks like their streets are in. I haven't driven out there recently, but those, those streets, I think, are ready for connection. And we will be dedicating the additional right of way requested by ACHD for that future development to the east. There, I think you can slow. But council members, there's that Teakwood Road. Again, this is a little bit older photo from the assessor's office where we'll connect. And there's the subject property. We will be this down. Wanting to go down. I'll just talk till it makes up its mind. We will be keeping some of the mature landscaping that you can see there from aerial photo, that existing home that occupied the, the four plus acres has some nice mature trees on it and will be maintaining some of those trees and removing the old outbuildings that don't comply with the setbacks to make sure that it all fits. And if there's any mitigation that's required for taking some of those trees out on your landscaping, we'll plan, we'll, we'll do that. Still not going down. Council members, you saw the, the renderings of our, our homes that we're proposing. They're an example of the quality type design we'll be using. And as I mentioned, we won't be having any two-story homes on the southern boundary. Just to mention a couple of things, the, there it goes. Well, just to talk a little bit more about that connection. There's Richardson. Go there. Richardson Street, that's the additional dedication that won't be built to ACHD. And we'll be utilizing a license agreement if we have any landscaping in that portion of the right of way that's dedicated. That, that will not be constructed until it's ready to actually be extended. And then we have just below that, the dark area. That's the emergency vehicle connection there to the existing access for the larger home. There's the bridge that was discussed. So that's your access connection. That's another common lot just to the north of that. So we're right next to a, a common lot as far as the location of that access. That'll be a 20-foot wide emergency vehicle access. The bollards will go about 30 feet off of Victory to make sure people aren't using that road regularly, just simply for emergency vehicles. The pathway there along Eight Mile Creek will be the 10-foot pathway with five-foot landscaping strips on each side. It does stop here at that bridge and that emergency access. The pathway plan doesn't require us to extend it any further, so it's shown here, but that won't actually be pathway. We'll have perimeter fencing, four-foot open vision along the pathway, and then six-foot closed vision around the perimeter of the remainder of the project. Just to talk a little bit about that bridge. Council members, that's an existing bridge. It's, we heard testimony, either 19 or 20 feet wide. Our desire not to have to build another bridge was the fact that was, as was mentioned earlier, we don't own that property. It's owned by the irrigation district. They generally aren't fans of folks constructing additional things in their facilities. And with that bridge being 20 feet wide, 19 feet wide, and only used for emergency vehicles, it would be really easy for pedestrians to be able to use that. You won't have emergency vehicles coming unless their sirens are going and the bollards are down. So it seems like that's something that could be shared. And the, the condition with the planning and zoning commission was to try to work with the parks on that. But there are some unique circumstances to that bridge. It's outside of our area of control, and it, it is pretty wide currently. The common lot space there down in the corner, Sonya mentioned that we will be aligning that with the common lot space to the west, and there's the pathway that goes through there. And then just to let you know, the driveway for the existing home will be here up at the top portion of that lot for the existing home, about three, three-quarter acre lot. So with that, mayor, council members, again, we'd ask for your approval of the recommendation from the planning and zoning commission. I'd be happy to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you. Council questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
Good to have you here, Senator Lakey.
Mayor, council member, just Todd tonight.
Um, so my question is about the relationship of this property and the Teakwood development to the west. Did I hear you say that, that this is the same developer, same owner? So I thought I heard you say there was a connection between the two in some capacity.
Mr. Mayor and council member Perro, the connection being a physical one. We're not the same property owner developer. The connection I was referring to is this, our common area here will match the common area and connect. Their staff is asking for an opening in our fencing to connect those two. So there's kind of a mutual amenity. That's what I was referring to.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
Thank you. Apologize. I didn't hear that correctly. So it's unfortunate, though, that these didn't work together because it'd be nice to not have two cul-de-sacs and two subdivisions side by side and to have had it through street since it seems like the cul-de-sacs are stopping it right about the same place on the south side of their properties. Did, was there, has there been any conversation? So Teakwood is not completed, is not completed yet, and there's not an HOA that has been a, a board that has been signed yet.
Mr. Mayor and council member Perro, I believe they were, I think it was final plated in November, but I, I can't say that they don't have an HOA. I don't, I don't know.
Uh, okay. So you haven't had a conversation with any of the neighbors about that fencing and whether it's, you know, does, I don't think we can condition it necessarily. So that's kind of what I'm trying to get at.
Um, Mr. Mayor and council member Perro, we were simply agreeable to staff's suggestion to leave an opening in the fence there that would coordinate with the, the property of the west that is being developed. I don't think there's any homes or anything there at this point, but we're, we were just trying to be amenable.
Council additional questions for the applicant?
Sure.
Councilman Cavan.
Surely. I know this came up at planning and zoning. I think some members of the planning and zoning commission, I'm one of them on the council that love common drives. I think they're the juice is often not worth the squeeze there. Talk to me a little bit about kind of circulation of the sub where you've got kind of the, the large house on block two. Is there any proposed parking mitigation to stop people from parking accessing? Again, a quick look on the Google map. It looks like that there's some access from that cul-de-sac. And I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to understand how, where this is all built, that people are gonna park. And if there's a Super Bowl party, birthday party, cul-de-sacs, I think, are great until a whole bunch of people all want to get together, and they can be really, really problematic.
Um, Mr. Mayor and council member Cavan. So again, we're, we are dealing with kind of an odd-shaped site, thus the, the common drives. Recognize that, you know, there, that they are there. That location, I guess, one of the, the positives about that is the fact that we are locating that home, that existing home on the portion there, and get the mouse to work. You can see where it is, that existing home there on the east side of Tamao. There aren't a lot of additional driveway accesses that if folks needed to park there, that they would be blocking. And then we also have the common area there on the other side of that cul-de-sac, which also wouldn't involve any blockage of, of driveways or accesses.
Councilman Cavan.
I did, but now I definitely like hot things, Dean. Mr. Lakey, kind of sticking with the theme of, of cul-de-sacs. And I've seen in some neighborhoods in South Meridian, I think of kind of the Bear Creek that have a lot of these very similar common drive cul-de-sac with maybe some homes that are more packed in. They've actually designed their cul-de-sac to be a little bit larger and create some parking in the middle. Is that anything you and your, your clients had, had comprehended as potential solution? Or you feel like you've got enough, I know you've got parking to meet code enough there. Sometimes code requires and what is really needed sometimes aren't always the same.
Um, Mr. Mayor and council member Cavan, I don't know that we've really talked about that. I can ask my client. I think kind of what, you know, I described before where we don't have lots, a lot of lots of buddy in the driveway near that or the buddy in the cul-de-sac with driveways there really does kind of help facilitate additional parking along that side. Were we to stick, you know, two or three more spaces in the middle of a cul-de-sac? We're kind of getting that with parking beside the road, not having driveways accessing that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Yeah, just, just to comment on that because our, my home and my in-laws' home are the same thing, existing homes now in the middle of a subdivision. Although we're not on a cul-de-sac straight street, our neighbors love it because they know if they're having lots of people over, they can park in front of our house because it's a large property, both of them. And they're not blocking anybody. Our houses are set back, so it's not like they're right in front of our house or anything. So that, that definitely is an advantage to have that extra space there because it allows people to park and you're not interfering with anybody. So it's just a unique, unique feature. You're fortunate to have that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council member Holden.
Councilman Cavan.
So the existing home, does it take access then from that, that, the bridge? Or would they take access through now the neighborhood and then come in and park in their home through that cul-de-sac?
Um, Mr. Mayor and, and council member Cavan, if I can get the mouse to behave. So currently, it does utilize that access that goes out across the bridge and onto Victory. As part of the approval and the conditions of approval, we have to limit that use across the bridge to just emergency only. And then where the driveway will be located, we can get the mouse to cooperate. Essentially, it will just go and run along the northern boundary of that larger lot where the home is located. So it pulls it out of the cul-de-sac and puts it along that northern boundary.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
There were two letters that came in today of public testimony. Just wondering if you'd had a chance to review those. And if so, I believe one of the letter writers is here and will probably hear from her, I'm guessing. But I'm curious if you have any comments on those because all three of the letters we received were filled with neighbors' questions regarding effects on their specific properties. If you'd like to speak to any of those. If you'd like to speak to any of those.
Mr. Mayor and council member Pro, it might be more appropriate for me to wait, I haven't had a chance to use those. I was familiar with, am familiar with some of the comments that were made at the planning and zoning commission from some of the same individuals. And a lot, a lot of those comments related to historic problems with previous owners of the property and that access. Which we no longer will be using, but I'm happy to address them in rebuttal.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could real quick, please clarify something that I said to Councilwoman Pro. You asked if they, my, my recommendation to remove the two lots were in a specific area, they actually were in a specific area. And that is in condition two A. On page nineteen of the staff report, and it was in the areas between lots six and eight along the southern boundaries. Between these three lots right here. And one lot, let's see, between lots eleven and fourteen. So that was this one, this one, and. Between the, it's right here. So anyway, just wanted to clarify that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Mayor, we have two people sign up, first is Monty Morgner online, and Monty, you can unmute.
This is Monty Morgner, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So my name is Monty Morgner, my address is two oh one five East Victory Road, Meridian, Idaho. So I'm one of the owners of the property immediately to the east across the canal. And also on that side of the canal, and you, members of the council and mayor have to realize that this property is unique in the fact that Napa Meridian owns the property. It's not like most places in, in Ada County and other places that they, that they have, they own that property. And this project will be accessing their property. And, and once our property, our old property comes, which is near the existing house, we own the property and we own the canal. I mean, Napa Meridian has an easement at that point, so it's very unique. So my, my concerns is first of all, you say you're gonna put in pressurized irrigation, but as existing now, it has to cross our property. I'm, I'm kind of shocked that this is actually at this stage because the easement, all these other things have never been addressed with us. Even though we've been there for years and years, no one's ever come and talked to us about use of the easement or any other condition. So one of the things regarding the easement is that the easement cannot adjoin another road. So you, you're advocating that the fire department is gonna use this easement for access. But under state law, they can't do that. The easement cannot join and intersect with another road, that's just a condition for easements. And, and this one protects, the other thing you brought up is this pathway across the canal. So where is this pathway gonna go, across the canal is either a little bit of Napa Meridian's property, which they don't allow anybody on their property. And the rest of it's ours, why would you even propose having pedestrians cross a bridge to come to private property? You, you say you're not condoning trespassing, but you're, you're advocating trespassing for this position. And so even if the, the fire department decides that they're going to use this easement, they cannot block the easement. It's our property and there would have to be some kind of agreement with us to make any kind of blockage on that easement. Nor can they restrict our use of that easement because there was something in the proposal that could be no parking on that, that can't happen. And then you're running into a problem that this bridge doesn't meet their code. Their code says it has to be twenty feet, the bridge is not twenty feet. I mean, I know Mr. Lakey saying that it's nineteen twenty, well, it isn't twenty feet. And that's required by the city of Meridian, the fire department to have that much area. The other thing I have a concern with is having houses that are two stories along the canal. You, you're accommodating the people in the subdivision to the south, but you're not accommodating us. It's gonna be intrusive onto our property, there's gonna be light issues. And not only that, the other people, when this subdivision are now gonna be looking at houses that are two story and it blocks their view. It doesn't seem to be a very community friendly thing. And the other thing that concerns me is that this fence, because Mr. Lakey, or if I'm pronouncing his right, hopefully I'm pronouncing his, his name right. Says that the fence will end at that road. Well, to me, this is one of the most dangerous places and, and most likely this subdivision. Because it's, it's, it's more, more affordable for people, it's gonna have kids, a bridge, there's a dam there in the canal. It's a very, and then it becomes cement ditch, is a very dangerous thing. This whole subdivision needs to be fenced off from the canal for safety reasons. I mean, you required everywhere else, there should be no way for anybody to have access to that canal bank, just for safety reasons. And my final problem is, is that this subdivision and the other subdivision and the one that's already in existing has, I believe, seventy-seven houses. So you're going to create, what, per your things, that each house can have two cars. You could have a hundred and fifty-four cars hitting one exit onto Locust Grove at one time. Technically, you could be, that could, and you also have a new roundabout going in at Locust Grove and Victory. Which is gonna limit, there's not gonna be any stop in the flow of traffic. And now you have up to a hundred and fifty-four cars hitting one exit. I mean, it's, you're, you're planning on this thing, it's just, I don't know, it seems to be like something, somebody dropped the ball there, you know? You, you're, all, all your conditions are to.
Monty, if you can wrap up, please.
Okay, all your conditions are to push all the traffic across to our place, but we have no plans on developing. And I, I find ironic that you're putting pathways and roads and everything into our place without involving us in the planning stages. So anyway, I appreciate your time, thank you, I hope you consider what I've talked about.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Mary DeChambeau.
Good evening.
Mary DeChambeau, two oh one five East Victory Road, I live on the property. Last but not least, I know you guys are all tired, I'm tired and I'm exhausted. One of the reasons we're so confused, and please forgive me, but we didn't get some of our answers until this morning, eight o'clock. Um, we've been emailing quite a bit and I'm surprised that some of the, our comments have not been included. When he talked about historical problems, the historical problems are still there because they were working conditions of approval. On that easement road that never, never got completed. Okay, I've been to planning, I mean, Ada County developers over the years, over and over again. Asking for the engineer sign off for the drainage, for the irrigation, because there's a reason there's a weed patch there. Like I said before, is because we haven't been able to get any irrigation. Because the easement road is blocking our ability to get irrigation water, they never put the street signs up, you know, this kind of thing. So now they want to use it as a fire lane, they want to put the chain and the bullet down by my house. Thirty feet in from Victory, they also said in the plan that it was used by the Napa Meridian Irrigation District. They're not authorized to use that road, they have, they can use their own canals. And what my brother was trying to explain, on the other side, it'd be the south west side of their house, their fence line, we actually own a little sliver in there. The ditch goes across and the mo, and most of those trees are on my property, they're not on theirs, okay? And what happens is the Napa Meridian property kind of goes at an angle and then it comes into our property. So there's just a little sliver there, one of the reasons, they did have the pathway there. And originally I thought they were supposed to have the pathway within their own property on that corner. And then connect up to Tuscany, and years ago, we sold off the corner of our property. So they could put a pathway, and what did Tuscany do, they built a hole and put a pond back there. Now they could grade it down there and connect it back in there. I mean, if they wanted to put the pathway on their side of the fence, but they would lose more property for a house. I understand that, but it would connect and then draw all the people back into Tuscany. Tuscany might have to do some adjustments on their little pond back there. But the thing that, you know, the usage of that easement road, we found out through the years were never, was never legal. They didn't do it correctly. So we're, there is a Idaho statute law that says that if you have parcel A connects to parcel B, you cannot piggyback to parcel C. And that's exactly what we have here. So our property has been burdened all these years with this easement. And now they want to run another road and burden our property with another out? Because let me tell you, when Tuscany went in, I went and said, I was complaining about the outs to the south of my property with the rest of my farm. And originally there was supposed to be one out, I ended up with three outs in the back of my property. They put it out into Patterson's place down on Locust Grove on the other side of Tuscany. And then I went in and I said, well, aren't you gonna put an out on the back of Richardson's place? No, he didn't want one, is what I was told. So I don't know, so, so the problem is, if you, if they would have put, like one of you, I believe you brought it up. If they had put the road out the back, none of these problems would have happened. And I brought it to the attention of the planning and zoning staff, but once again, nobody, they just ignored. And so sure enough, I pulled up an old, an old map that somebody had thrown on my property. And I looked at it before planning zoning last month, and sure enough, they had that bridge going across the Eight Mile. And I thought in two thousand and three, and yet Tuscany hadn't even been built yet. So I think this is not an accident. I know, I realize, I'm trying to, it's late at night and you let everybody else talk for a long time.
I did, I've got to go for a couple more minutes.
You know, there's a lot of legal issues that these guys have not taken care of. And we're gonna have, I don't know what the DA is gonna say, I don't know what the conditions. Because if the fire department, I don't believe the fire department can use that easement for their purposes. Because they all have things like no parking, everything, we use it on a daily basis and we park on it all the time. So there's a real problem there and a lot of the comments and things I've been kind of confused about, I have to look up the code. I'm, I'm trying to figure out, are they referring to which easement? Which access road, is it ours or is it the one that they're gonna put out by the Richardson place going along the canal? Also, one last final thing, I've been in talks with Greg from Napa Meridian, he doesn't know anything. He says, I haven't seen any plans or anything, I haven't reached out to them at all.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
So you said that you're the resident, that will, that will, that's part of this property that, that you're, you would now be on an eight tenths of an acre. Did you say that you're the resident that's on this subject property that we're discussing or that you're a neighbor?
I'm the one where they're putting the bridge over to, I'm the one that owns the real property of the easement road.
On the east side of this.
Yes, yes, and that runs with the property, however, there were prior conditions of approval that were never met.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Cavaner.
Those prior conditions that you believe weren't being followed was through the county, those.
Yes.
And you touched, Mr. Mayor, if I may, it sounds like that you, you've tried to bring these concerns to the county. And they just, they haven't been receptive to your concerns or the, their answers you're not satisfied with. Help me understand that piece, because I'm, I'm, I know that this is something that's very real to you, that you've dealt with on a daily basis. And I'm getting a snapshot of it, so I'm just trying to connect something of the dots, I think that maybe you're making sense in your head, but I'm not smart enough to follow along.
No, 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 it's fine. The actions taken against me in the last six years have been atrocious. It's hard for me to even leave my house. We've gone to court, I've been thrown in jail, I've been beaten. This has gotten way out of hand. And like I said in planning and zoning, meaning that if, I don't like to talk about it because that's not what we're here to talk about. But if they would have just put that out in the back. I have three, this will make four outs. And this road that comes through really doesn't serve our property at all, it's all for the benefit of this property. And I've been told that they now want to take the easement that exits out for that little parcel onto Victory, they're gonna take that away. That's the plan, the rumors, you know, people indicate, you know. I never thought things would get so crazy. The other thing that I want to, before I forget, you know, they're, they're suggesting we put signage up. Well, prior and present owners have removed all my signs on that road. Because the easement road that goes by my house is nineteen to eighteen feet away from my bedroom window. It's not like it's clear across, it's right there. And so, you know, I put signs up and professional signs made because of all the strangers that just come in. We're concerned about, I already have had six hundred and fifty-seven trespassers on my farm. One drowning and one five-year-old near miss. If I hadn't been on the riding bar jumping up and down and a guy looked at the crazy lady, we would have lost a five-year-old. He was able to nab him. So I do know that there is problems with canals. I spend a good share of my time telling kids they can't be there. And the problem didn't get better until I, the property owner, was thrown in jail. And if you're frowning, you should hear the rest of the story, it makes a great John Grisham novel. And I'm, you know, it's disturbing, it's, I mean, the whole thing that's happened to me has just been disturbing. Because I used to throw great big parties up there, a lot. And, you know, I've become sort of an expert on easement law now, but if there's a private road, you can only have nineteen trips, that means eight cars. You know, that kind of stuff, which is nonsense, but they don't ever abide by it. And another thing the staff has recommended is they don't use the easement road for their construction equipment. Well, they've been using it quite a bit for the last six months. It's hard to tell what is a service person or their construction vehicles. I don't know what else to tell you, I just. They were not supposed to be given a permit until everything was taken care of before they built that house up there. One of the things that, you know, there was all these things, irrigation, drainage waters should not be impeded by any construction on site. It was supposed to be verified by the county engineer, it never was. This is the one thing I asked over and over from Ada County Development. And when I went in there a month ago, they told me, well, Mary, we have to sacrifice one, one parcel. But here's the deal, they've been enjoying their parcel for all these years and we still haven't even been able to use ours for what we bought it for. And to tell you the truth, we bought it to save the historical oak tree. Which is now so damaged and so trimmed that it will never look pretty again. But it's one of those, what, it's a survey tree, and if you don't know what an old ancient survey tree is. But they used to put them on the survey lines back in the day. back in the day. And I, we figured the tree's at least two hundred years old. I've had it looked at by Idaho Power and they said it comes from the Appalachian Mountains. Had to go all the way back there to figure and get it identified. And that road runs right on its base.
Yeah, your counsel question.
Anyway.
Counsel, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
That's one of them.
Just a clarification. So I understand, I'm trying to grasp where your house is in relation. I see the bridge currently that crosses Eight Mile. And the road that goes up looks like right next to your house. Who owns the land on the other side of that road?
I own on both sides.
You own on both sides of that.
And I own the easement, the land on, the real property on the easement.
Yeah. Counsel, any additional questions? All right. Thank you, Mary. Can we have anybody else sign up?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. Is there anybody else present or online that'd like to try testimony on this item? Okay. Garrett, would you mind coming forward and at least addressing the pathway, master path plan?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, so the future, when the master plan for the pathways does depict a proposed pathway to cross the Eight Mile right there on a bridge, right? Whether it be pedestrian or the vehicular bridge, it's Park's, you know, opinion that it should be on the pedestrian, um, the vehicular bridge there and just to get it widened to where you can have a ten-foot path. One reason for that is any kind of bridge, pedestrian bridge that goes across the, the irrigation district's property, we have to own after that. So we'd have to get in an agreement with the irrigation district that we would own that bridge at that point. Um, we don't know what the integrity of that bridge is. We haven't researched it, haven't checked it out, those types of things. I don't know if fire has, if it, if it's an access there. But that's, that's kind of the Park's opinion on the, on the bridge by itself. But, um, it's just a proposed pathway at this point that goes through there on, um, per the, the master plan. So with that, I'll stand for questions if you think.
So why not stay on the west side and follow it up to Victory? And then if you need to be on the east side, you would cross over at Victory. I assume you're, I assume it's going to continue on the pathway or is it going someplace else that I'm not remembering? Is it going into the subdivision on the streets separately?
Mr. Mayor, so if I understand a correction, um, it, from that, the vehicle bridge, the mouse is working yet or not, if you can see it, I don't see the mouse, but, um, the proposed future vehicle bridge to the north there, it would go up to Victory. Right from the south, um, it would, it originally looked like it was going to possibly go on the west side of the canal there, Eight Mile, to kind of go down and connect into the, the lower future connectivity for the, the lower subdivision. Looking at the spacer, wasn't enough room for it to get through there. So it got kind of projected to get, put more to the east side of that canal with a pedestrian bridge or, or vehicular bridge there. That answers your question.
Sorry. So you're saying it's going to go north and south from that bridge? Any particular reason why it can't stay on the west side? Again, I'm, you're, you're going to hit the, within ten feet or twenty feet up at Victory if you were to stay on the west side. I'm just, there's a specific reason?
To my understanding, it was spacing, just on that, on the west side there from the property owners to that, to the canal.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Holman.
Just looking at this, it looks like that residence along Victory, along the Eight Mile Canal lateral, that, that's their drive. It becomes their driveway. Is that the issue of not continuing that on the west side, uh, the pathway to Victory? When you talk about spacing, is that where we're talking about?
Their driveway is hidden by trees. So it's not in, it's not at the canal location. It's to the west of fifty, seventy-five feet. It wouldn't make them close to that house, but we typically, my point is we typically run our pathways within the easements for Napa Meridian, so it should not impact any of this, any property owner in that regards. If it's in the easement per our master agreement with them, I just don't know if that doesn't apply in this case because of the type of facility or not.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I honestly don't know that answer. I believe it is supposed to go there and it could go east and kind of south there. That's why they wanted to cross it there and there was already a proposed bridge. So it was just an easier way to get across. That answers that question.
It answers a question, you know, I, I, I think ultimately, my, you know, my two, two thoughts on this process is that, yeah, does an easement is an access to this location? If it's not going to be a planned regular road into this location, does it make sense to exist in the easement for the future? Secondary access for the property aside, but that's my, my two cents. I mean, I've, I assume it's, uh, the bridge is adequate to put a fire engine over. I'm I don't know that for a fact, but I, that's why the deputy chief's on if he wants to speak to that point, but it's, I, long-term, I'm, 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 yeah, I guess I could be in a voting situation tonight, but the long-term access of, of this, to this location, to me, does not make a lot of sense from an easement to road or frankly, even a pedestrian. I think there's other ways to handle the crossing in this area where you don't have to even have the bridge there. But I understand it's also part of our pathway master plan and that's just my two cents of. Counsel, additional questions, at least for Garrett. He's not going to go far. I know that. He doesn't want to go home. Well, the family might be asleep, maybe not.
There is.
All right. Thank you, Garrett. Is there anybody else, uh, deputy chief, do you? Do you want to weigh in on this at all?
Mr. Mayor, uh, counsel, I, I'm, I'm happy to, um, I, I have driven that road. Um, I've been across the bridge. Um, I met with the homeowners of that large house in the southeast corner there. Uh, we've met and we looked at the act. They were concerned about access to their house. Oh gosh, this was probably pre-COVID. And so I've, I've driven back there. Um, I've driven the road. I've driven the bridge. Um, I actually took my tape measure out and measured parts of it. Some of it is not twenty feet wide. Uh, I think the narrowest spot was maybe sixteen. Um, I just had asked them to keep the branches cleared on the trees up at, at Victory to make sure we could get through there. Um, but other than that, um, I was, I'm fine with everything. So, uh, you know, I'm, I would be comfortable sending an engine across that bridge. Uh, like I said, I've driven it. Um, this is, again, this is secondary access, emergency access only. Uh, are we going to need it? Hopefully not. So, you know, in the future, when this, uh, the neighbor's property develops, uh, then this is going to go away anyway. Happy to answer any other questions.
Maybe a question for the applicant when they come back up, the standards, wish the bridge was built. I'm just curious, you know, is it built to a roadway standard? Um, is it built to a, you know? Yeah, I mean, if there's any information you have on the bridge, just for a long-term viability, that would be very interesting to hear from my perspective.
Mr. Mayor, I can help you out on that, having helped my father-in-law over Five Mile, building a bridge, rebuilding a bridge from wood to concrete. It's built to milk truck standard, so a full milk truck can go over without falling through. So that's how we built them.
Fair enough. Okay. Well, would the applicant like to come forward?
Mayor, council members, again, for the record, Todd Leakey, uh, one forty-one East Carlton Avenue, Meridian, Idaho, eight three, six, four, two. Um, so I'll try to hit some of the points and then be happy to, to answer questions. So again, in regard to the property history, um, my clients of, own the purchased property in the last year. So they have not been part of any of the historical problems with the neighbors. Uh, they've been nothing but gentlemen. They pursued this application and own the property. Council members were using an easement. Um, there's an easement that exists for access to and from that four point one one acres. We are actually decreasing the burden on that easement, uh, by limiting it to emergency vehicle only. The dominant estate still consists of the four point one one acres. So I don't see any issue with the easement, uh, itself. Uh, the pathway that's been discussed, mayor and council members, we're, we're trying to comply with your plan. And it's not our plan, it's your plan. And that was put together, I assume, with lots of public input and, and assistance with your planning staff. So we're designing the, the pathway in accordance with your standards and the location you request. It doesn't go any, it doesn't connect to anything right now. As far as further to the north, there isn't a pathway. We're building it for the future for the city's benefit. We have been accommodating, as I said, to the property owners to the south. That was the comment. They requested that we not have two-story, um, homes. The property owners that testified don't represent those folks. Um, that was our discussions with them. As far as the, the bridge itself, um, it looks like it, I, I, we can't, I'm not sure exactly when it was built. Um, it's, it's not ancient. Perhaps when the home was built, maybe in the, the nineties, thousands would be our guests or from our engineer. But, um, again, I'd rely on the, the fire department and looking at that. Um, also the Meridian, Napa Meridian Irrigation District, uh, knowing that was for vehicular access, wouldn't have allowed something substandard that might create liability for them and their property. Council members, I, I, as I said, I can't really comment on, um, the lady's comments about interactions with law enforcement and, and her perspective on her history there. Um, I don't know any of it. We weren't involved in any of it. Didn't initiate any of those arrests or anything like that. The pressurized irrigation, we don't need to do anything with the property to the east. Our pressurized irrigation is going to come through Teakwood. So we don't need any permission, any access. We don't need anything from the properties to the east. And we're staying out of Napa Meridian's, uh, irrigation easement and respecting that in accordance with their requests. Mayor and council members, I, I think we're going the extra mile on, in regards to the emergency access. Uh, it was utilized for that existing home. If the bollards need to be moved because they utilize it, that's, that's fine. We can accommodate that wherever the most appropriate location is for those bollards. I think they were initially, I requested to be put out on Victory to keep people off the road. And so we'll, we're, we're happy to put those wherever, um, the city deems most appropriate. The development agreement will include the conditions of approval. Our challenge, we're, we're trying to do our best with the bridge. Our challenge is, as we described before, it's over Napa Meridian's property. We don't control that. Um, and it is limited, uh, to, uh, emergency access. So we hope that it can be used for both. Um, but we are a little concerned about having to build something off our property for a plan. And it's something that we don't control, particularly if it needs to be owned by the city in the future. With that, mayor and council members, um, I just refer back to the planning and zoning commission decision and staff's analysis. We meet the requirements for approval, uh, of this application based on its, um, comprehensive plan designation, the proposed zoning, uh, the design of the project. We meet, um, all the city standards. We'd ask for your approval. I'd be happy to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Leakey. Um, question, I don't know if this is for you or for deputy chief as well. There's an existing secondary emergency access off of Victory that comes in off of Arno in the, essentially where the other subdivision ends and the one that's Teakwood is under construction. Is that accurate, deputy chief?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, counsel, yes, that is.
So is this another emergency access necessary under code?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, it, it is, because the problem is, once you get past that point, we're past thirty lots. And basically fire code says you, if you're, if you're past thirty, if you're past thirty lots, sorry, brain's still a little fuzzy from COVID. Um, if you're past thirty lots, then, um, you have to have secondary access. So the other way around this is, uh, we would have to condition that the entire subdivision uh, be fire sprinkler. All the homes have fire sprinklers in them.
So essentially the Teakwood access, secondary access, you can't have more than thirty after that secondary access, my,
Correct.
What you're saying?
Yes, that is correct.
And how many are in Teakwood?
I thought it was like twenty-two. I can't remember. That was in.
Let me go grab my notes. I think it's thirty-three.
Yeah, maybe it, I thought it was twenty-two, but I, I could, I could be wrong.
If it's thirty-three, then what you said to me doesn't seem like it would be code.
Yeah, in that secondary access, again, because we, I knew that there was more coming. And so I wasn't too concerned with it at the time, Mr. Mayor. I mean, a couple houses isn't going to make or break us.
Uh, Mayor, I do have, in my notes anyway, thirty-three lots in the Teakwood.
Okay. I'm not sure if all of those are, um, homes though, because I don't count empty lots. The common lots.
Um, there again, we're, we're happy to, um, make that easement available for emergency vehicle access. And as was stated, you know, once that property to the east, which is open, develops, then there won't be any need for it.
And I'm hoping to go the opposite way to see if there's a way that you can vacate, if the property owners would vacate the access altogether in order to, because not needed from that standpoint. That's why I was trying to see if there was an already secondary access
Sure.
um, in this area. That's, so that's, that's my mental thinking is annexation, give up access to that. And it doesn't seem like it's something that your, the development needs. You know, if the fire department feels like it would be otherwise compliant, but I'm also curious if Mr. Mary, if we can, you know, I know he's, but is it thirty, is it thirty? Is that the hard number? Does you have, does every chief have the ability to waive the number? Or is it, are there thirty residential lots and three common lots that equals the thirty-three? Do you have any idea?
Uh, Mr. Members of council, I believe it's, it's thirty residential lots. So it is the residential lots that count.
That's the number, nothing else in this case that would trigger it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and counsel, I, I do have in the county, um, over off Sandy Court, a, a whole subdivision that was added. And what we did there was we conditioned, or the county conditioned that sub that any new construction had to have fire sprinklers put in them. And the builder was amiable to that and they, they built all of the houses with fire sprinklers in them. So that, that could be an option here. Um, we can put fire sprinklers on all the home, uh, less the existing home. And then do away with that easement. And I would be okay with that.
Mayor, if I might respond there, um, I think our preference is certainly just to be able to utilize that easement. I, I've certainly had mixed reactions, I guess, from, um, clients on sprinkler systems and whether they're usable and maintainable and things in the future. Um, certainly that would drive up the cost, which would be passed on, but it, anyway, we, we'd simply prefer to be able to use the accesses.
Mr. Mayor, I have the, the face sheet of the staff report from Teakwood up. And it shows on the final plat, this is back from April thirteenth of twenty twenty-one, says final plat consists of twenty-two building lots and four common lots. So I don't know where that thirty-three number goes from.
So I thought it was 22.
It says 22 building lots and four common lots according to this staff report from planning.
If we can avoid the secondary access, that would be great. But
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, looking at Google Earth, I counted 35, but maybe those houses up there don't count. But I don't understand from Deputy Chief Bonjorno, you know, if we have a secondary access, let's say, whatever it is, 33 lots on this one, and we have an access off of Victory that comes in at the point you were referring to, and then takes in the new property, so there's if the access on Locust Grove is blocked off, they can come in off of Victory. I don't, because all we're doing is moving it further west as opposed to coming, having the secondary off of between the property of Mr. DeChambeau to come across there. So I'm not, I'm a little lost on why that isn't an adequate secondary access. Chief, do you have any thoughts on that? Are we on the same page where we're looking at for that secondary access?
So, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, the way I look at secondary access is the problem is that if you go all the way back to Locust Grove, that initial subdivision that's out on the corner has more than 30 lots in it. And it did not have secondary access. So that was pre me. And probably pre Chief Palmer. So that particular subdivision, if you pull up your Google map and go all the way back to the corner, that initial lot, yeah, that initial sub has more than 30 in it. So when Tequah came along, that access was there, but nobody ever finished it. So as part of Tequah's approval, I said, okay, well, we need to, we need a secondary access out to Victory. And so the problem is, is I use the crashed airplane scenario. If you crash the airplane right there at that emergency access that goes right out to Victory from, let me pull up the map here, from Arno. If you plot, if you crash the airplane right there, you need that access to the west that we're proposing for this subdivision to get in. Accesses have to be half the diagonal of the property apart. You know, they have to be separated. And so if the plane crashes at Arno and then emergency access, we have no way to get to these subdivision. If Grandma's having a heart attack, or if one of these buildings is on fire, the only way we're going to be able to get to it is via this access that I've requested stay open for the subdivision. Are you following me now?
I, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Chief Bonjorno, yes, I am. So you need that access off of the DeChambeau easement, we'll call it, that comes up.
Correct.
That area, so, okay.
We need that, we need that, that eastern most access to get us in the back door, so to call it. Because that one access kind of sits right in the middle of everything.
Okay, thanks for clarifying, Chief.
Now Deputy Chief, if I can just say on one, one additional question, I know if the code says 30, the code says 30. Is that intended from a distance standpoint? Is a typical rationale that you're an R4 and 30 homes, and it's going to be, take you so far in? And I say this because 22, this could, this piece of property that we're talking about, I mean, personally, I've got a when I look at this, I'm like, I'm baffled at how many units are being proposed for this space, because it seems so tight with the existing home. That's just a mental picture. But this is, this is like one of the smallest drive aisles that I've seen to surround so many homes. You know, we've got a couple homes off of common drives, one giant home. Does distance make, that's my point, does distance make a difference? Or is it just this pure residential number that is the most, the more important factor in your mind?
For me, it's, it's number. The number is, because that's what code says, code says 30 residential lots. And then the exception, the number one exception under that is sprinklers, excuse me, if unless they're sprinkler.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm off my soapbox, but thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Just thinking through conditions and a motion at some point, so I want a clarification from you. The commission changes that were, the commission changes that recommended to staff. The first one being that there's a sign regarding construction traffic. I just want clarification that you use, the applicant would be amenable to that. Or if you don't feel it's necessary, why, why not?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Pro, we're happy to put up whatever sign you would like.
I imagine you discuss that with them, but I just like to always make sure I get it on the record before we finalize things. And then are you comfortable working with the Parks Department on a potential new location for the pathway, potentially on the west side, as the mayor mentioned, prior to final plat recording? The staff report says east side. Perhaps that's something that there's a discussion with staff about. I don't, I don't, I want to be able to specify that condition this evening, but I also don't want to keep it the way it is in the staff report. So I think we need to get clarification on that tonight before we were to make a motion.
Councilmember Pro, I'm not sure, I mean, I, the path is located on the west side of the canal, the east side of the subdivision. Here where the mouse is.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I just pulled up the staff report, and if I'm reading it correctly, the condition is to have that pathway run along the east side of the, of the lateral. Staff can clarify if I'm not understanding.
Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Pro, I was just trying to find the exact condition. Yeah, the, the master pathways plan does depict the pathway along the west side of the lateral. If you can see my pointer here up until this point, and then it is planned to cross over with redevelopment of the property to the east, if and when it redevelops, and then continue on to the south on the east side of the lateral. I'm just double checking my condition right now.
My apologies, I had a different screen up. Can you go, can you show me that again with your pointer?
Yes. So this is the lateral here, this is the subject property with the pathway will be on the west side of the lateral here. And then it will cross over in the approximate location of the bridge, either at the bridge or another pedestrian bridge. And then it will, with redevelopment of the property to the east, if and when it redevelops, then the property, or excuse me, pathway will continue on to the south on the east side of the lateral.
That makes more sense, thank you.
Okay, then, so I misunderstood the mayor's comments then regarding the suggested new location for the pathway with, with.
That's because it was implied that it was going to be on the other side. So it's on the right side, in my opinion, because this is where the development is occurring now. Okay, that explanation, explanation, so we were both not clear.
Okay, so we're good. Awesome, great.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Just some clarification, and this may be staff, fire chief, the applicant. Is it common that we have an emergency access that we, the city, don't have any control over? It runs through the middle of a county parcel?
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Overton, Council, I wouldn't say it's common. I it's not a desired thing for sure. I did talk to Mr. DeChambeau about it, and I did ask for a copy of the easement. I don't believe she was able to provide that to me. And the only reason, it's not my business to review it necessarily. I just, I wanted to have our legal take a look at it to see what that easement entitled them, you know? If, if it allowed emergency vehicles, if it was specific to that resident or, or what? But I don't have that information to answer that.
Mr. Mayor, follow up. If we don't have a legal decision on where that easement stands, are we in a position we could face where we approve this with an easement that legally we could find out we don't have it? And now we put these houses in violation of Deputy Fire Chief's 30-house rule? And now we don't have that secondary access because we never did the homework and got the legal finding on the easement. Is that a concern, Mr. Mary?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Overton, it's a little bit of a concern, because without us knowing, obviously, we're not the benefactors of that easement. It's the, it's the property owner to the, that's the existing house, right? That's their, that's essentially their roadway easement through that road to Victory across that bridge. So without us being the benefactor of it, then technically, we can't just use it to use it for a fire truck, even if it's usable. But Deputy Chief Bonjorno, he should probably weigh in, said there are other, there could be other alternatives that could work if we can't use that road. But that, that would be more in line for him. But, yeah, I would agree with you, Councilman Overton. Without us being the benefactor of it, us knowing what the specifics of that easement are, yeah, I wouldn't be comfortable and say just use it.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Chief.
Mr. Mayor and Council, again, I'm, I'm not a property rights person. That's more in Mr. Harry's logs, but I do know that typically, to answer your first question, any easements that we have for emergency access do go through an easement process and you know, they are signed off by, you know, all the appropriate people. Because I do approve easements for emergency access. I, in this particular case, I, I also have not, I don't know anything about the easement. But yeah, it would probably be somebody to find out exactly what this easement says to see if we're legally able to use it. And if we can't, Billner and Mr. Mary had talked about other access. I mean, the only other option would be to utilize the canal road. And typically, not always, but most of the time, the ditch company frowns upon 80,000-pound fire engines running up and down the side of their ditches. So that would be the other option. And then it just goes back to, you know, the houses have to be fire sprinkler, period.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I was just gonna add one thing, and I don't know if Mr. Lakey knows more about this. But my assumption is, is that although we, we aren't a party to this easement, that is our only way to get to the existing house. So that house is on fire, that's the only way we can get there currently, because that's the only road that goes to the house that I could see. So there may be something in the easement that gives some right to access from the emergency, because otherwise, police and fire couldn't get there. Mr. Mayor, what I might suggest is either condition us being able to use that easement and providing that and demonstrating that to the city that it is usable. Or if not, the fire sprinklers. So you could do it either way.
Mr. Mayor. That's one. Mr. Lakey, is that something you can, do you need some time to look at? And we just continue this hearing to allow some research?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Hoagland, I'm, I'm fine with an alternative condition, worded in that way.
So, Mr. Lakey, Mr. Mayor. That's wrong. And, and those conditions, again, if the alternative condition, one is utilizing that easement as a secondary access or
demonstrating the city's ability to use it.
Okay.
Or complying with fire code requirements for sprinklers.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Just to clarify, Council President Hoagland, the utilizing easement as secondary access, wasn't that already conditioned in the report? And so that's not an alternative, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro, yes, it's, it's something that was already approved and we're going to utilize. But now this gives us, okay, what if? You know, we can, then if that is truly not the case, which I think the property owner has had this easement from 90s to 2000, there should be evidence or legal process there that shows that. Now, I don't know if splitting the property now creates any other dynamics for that. But if there does, then we, they can demonstrate to us the city's ability to use. That is an issue, or final alternative would be to put in sprinklers, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I'm just trying to understand why copy of legal description for that easement wouldn't have been included in application materials to staff runs with the property. It's, it's of record, I assume?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Pro, I, I assume as well that it's part of the title package. I don't know that that was submitted as part of the application. Obviously, it wasn't if the city was still looking for it. So we'll find it, we'll get it to the city and go from there.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Sonia.
May I make a suggestion, please, regarding the access easement? There's a commission seven in the staff report for access for the existing home to be provided solely from internal local streets. The existing driveway via Victory Road shall be used solely for emergency purposes, emergency access. I'd suggest you just maybe add to that condition. You know, if there's a legitimate access easement there, otherwise the property should be, or the property should be sprinkler, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Just to make it clear, if they have to sprinkle as a home, Mr. Lakey, the existing home has to get sprinkler too. Because all of them in the subdivision have to be then sprinkler. So is that what your client's willing to do?
If it's over the 30. Yep. I mean, if it's over the number, it's over the number. So, yeah, we have to comply.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
In that case, then, would number seven be removed from the staff report and replaced by the requirement to sprinkle, to sprinkle the properties? Then we're no longer discussing secondary emergency access.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to retract my comment. Sorry, I'm really tired. I was looking at that condition, and it doesn't really apply to this. Let's just make it a condition.
As I understand it, then, seven, access for the existing home shall be provided solely from internal local streets. The existing driveway via east Victory Road shall be used solely for emergency access. If that becomes, is no longer available through documentation that the applicant will demonstrate the ability, the, if there's an issue. I'm trying to think how to get this right.
As, if applicable, at the end of that condition.
Yeah. Access for the, shall be solely used for emergency access if applicable. And then we would require to demonstrate that ability to use if it's not applicable, or sprinklers would be, would be used. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Thank you. So to clarify, Council, President Hoagland, you're recommending a to proceed with staff's recommendation unless there, unless there's findings that once we have the legal description, staff has legal description of the, of the access or a recording of the current easement, they find an issue with access, then the applicant has an alternative method that they can choose to go forward and not necessarily make it either or in the conditions.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro, yes, correct. That gives them the option to still move forward in the, in the next, in the next steps.
Can I throw another wrench into it? We had testimony from an applicant, from one of the property owners that basically even if you feel like you have the right, maybe there, if there's a legal challenge, because under our understanding of state law that says you cannot do A to B to C. So you may look these. So you may look at these, but say, we have it and have a, if there was a legal challenge to come forward, what would happen then? Is there an expectation that if you were legally challenged and you lost the access because it's no longer set up the way it was? We would then also expect sprinkling to be done? And what if that comes six years from now? So, because the court ain't going fast.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I think my, my wording was demonstrate to the city, the city's ability to use it. So I guess I would have to meet Mr. Nary's approval that the city legally can use it. I suppose anybody can challenge anything anytime.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm saying it's demonstrated, but then the court says, no. Now it's been undemonstrated from us and you've got 10 homes built or 16 homes built. That's where I'm just trying to, you know, how do, how do we get to a point in time where we all feel comfortable with Mr. Shamo's interpretation of the law or to be found correct down the road? That's literally down the easement. Whatever.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think what would likely happen six years from now, if somehow it was challenged, somehow that was upheld, somehow the access went away and we didn't have it, we would not issue a building permit to exceed that number. They couldn't build another house because they'd have been building, I, I see where you're going. They're gonna build houses and they're gonna put sprinklers in them. Five years from now, somebody says that access is gone. We wouldn't let them build any more houses.
But they would all be built at that point in time? We just eat it? If that's what's, I just want, I want, just want that to be on the table, record, deputy chief, everyone.
Yeah, I, I would say, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's probably true. Probably the same rationale we lived with the fact that corner parcel only had one access for many years.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
What would make me most comfortable is for the applicant to find any recorded documents related to the easement, legal descriptions related to the easement and have that conversation with staff and just continue this until we have that. I just think that, to me, it makes sense. Shouldn't be, if it's recorded, this shouldn't be that complicated. Unless I'm missing something. If there isn't, if the easement is not, has not been recorded, has been being used in that capacity all this time, then, then there's different regulations regarding that, that we don't need to discuss here. But if we really want to solve this problem, we continue it, we give a couple of weeks, let them go find the document, the documentation associated, and then we move forward. And that one might save our applicant a significant amount of cost. Just, just the applicant can comment on whether that's an option they're interested in.
Mayor, council. Let you get your thoughts out, and then I had a suggestion as well.
Councilman Overton.
My biggest concern is I believe this variance to this property existed prior to these, the applicants being owners. And we don't know how long and how old that variance is. And if it had a clause in it that said, if at any time you subdivide your property, your variance is no longer any good. I mean, there's all sorts of stipulations that could be in that document. If the applicant wants to just say, well, if it doesn't happen, and I have, here's plan B, I want to sprinkle all the houses. I'm okay with that. It's a plan B, but we have to know that before I can proceed.
Mayor, council, if I can just interject a couple, couple technicalities here, and I don't want, appreciate the dialogue. I'm sure we're all looking out for the best interest of the community. But to your point, Councilman Overton, that's some of the concerns we have is when some gets further developed and that easement's no longer in effect. So we need to see that language. Two, this is annexation. And right now, if, if I'm the planner and Sonia and I here, I would recommend that you lean towards, you shall sprinkler the homes unless you can demonstrate easement. Because then you've got it in place. There's, if he doesn't have the easement, then you at least know you got the sprinkler component done. You have that, you have that right there. If it doesn't happen, it's there and conditioned. The other part of it is there's only 22 houses to the west. So technically, the applicant would only have to sprinkle what, eight, eight of the homes could get constructed before sprinklers were required. I don't want to make that a technicality here, but that would be our preference that it be put in the DA that you shall sprinkler the homes unless you can demonstrate to the city. And if they can, come back and do a DA mod and we have another conversation. At least we get another bite at the apple with a DA modification and not have a plaque condition. Because once the plaque gets recorded, it's going to be tough to unravel that condition.
Mr. Mayor, follow up. That's my, that's a very good point. And if the deputy chief is still on, can we, can, can we work the math that way? If there's only 22 homes in the other development, are we only looking at everything over 30 once we get to this one?
Well, that's why I was trying to go earlier with my comments, even about common driveways. Can we count them as one? Because it's really. But that's a different issue. Deputy Chief, I'll let you weigh in since you've been muted.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, and counsel. I would hate to play the, the numbers game, saying, well, okay, who gets to pick? Who gets sprinklers or not? I, I would just make the whole subdivision be sprinklered. It's easier that way. That way, when the water lines are run, they'll run the appropriate lines to each property. And honestly, it's extremely expensive to retrofit houses for sprinklers. So I would be okay with that existing home not being sprinkled. But the rest of them, anything new would be sprinklered.
Mr. Mayor, if I might respond, appreciate that comment. We certainly would be happy with that. And I think staff's phrasing is a little more artful. We're okay with that. If you say shall be sprinkled unless, we're okay with that.
Mr. Mayor.
That's wrong.
You switched it up on me. So we're gonna keep condition seven. Existing access for the existing home shall be provided solely from internal local streets. The existing drive, the East Victory Road shall be used solely for emergency access. And you, and utilize, and if applicable, or the applicant will demonstrate their ability to use the existing drive for emergency access or the subdivision shall be sprinklered. If you, we, we had moved that shall be sprinklered or that phrase earlier. So, so I think, are we just doing utilize if applicable or sprinkler?
Mr. Mayor and councilmember Hoagland, I, I think if, if applicable, period.
Okay.
And then I think the way staff worded it was the, the subdivision will be sprinkled unless applicant demonstrates the city's ability to utilize the easement for emergency vehicle access.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
Uh, you, to use that easement in perpetuity or some sort of statement that it's, that can be used permanently? I don't know if we need that clarification. I think it would make sense to, unless there's just an assumption in every one of these conditions that that's the case. But because it's possible, I assume that there could be a legal challenge to take that access away, that secondary access away from the subject property. We probably should make sure to clarify that in the condition.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate you trying to, to wordsmith that, Councilman Hoagland. But you really need to add a new DA provision that says the homes shall be sprinklered except for the existing residents. And then or the applicant shall demonstrate they have the right to use that easement.
That's what I was trying to perpetuate. And the condition seven, wherever you want to put it is fine.
We want it in the development agreement. We certainly don't want it as a plaque condition. It's going to be easier for us. We can, if something happens in the future and we need to reconvene the body and talk about this issue, then the best method is to do a development agreement modification and bring it up.
Mr. Mayor. Respond to Councilwoman Pro's comment. I think, I think the easement has to remain as long as it's necessary. Because as that DeChambeau property may develop at some point in the future, there may be different accesses into this property. So it just needs to be able to remain as long as it's needed, so.
Correct. There may be a secondary access when the property owner sells their property and something else is.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hoagland. If I could propose this, I think, I think we're close. I think we need a five-minute recess to put some heads together and come up with that language to, to make sure we're all on the same page and not try to do a motion and start and restart and come back and try and fix it again. So if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Mayor, is that acceptable?
Yeah, yes, we'll take a re, five-minute recess.
Okay, thank you. Don't you dare. I know, I know. Well, what I see is. They have. Eh, up here, oops. Show the whole, whole plat.
What?
Can you, can you go back to the whole, whole plat?
Staff's exhibit. I don't know if I can control that here.
Sonia. Sonia. Can, can you back up just to show the whole plat? The whole plat? Yeah, right up there. That's the bridge. Okay, then.
That's where.
Okay. All right, we'll come back from recess.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Like to give this a try for this application. After considering all staff applicant, we close the public. Oh, yes, let's close the public hearing first, shall we? Second. I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second, close the public hearing. All those in favor, sing about by saying I.
Hi.
Hi.
Close name, as having the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
That's my number one.
After considering all staff applicant, public testimony, a move to approve file number H 2022-0089 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of March 21, 2023, with the addition of a DA provision, item E, which reads, the applicant shall fire sprinkle all new residences or demonstrate that the existing access can be utilized for emergency access only with the final plat application.
Second.
Have a motion and a second is their discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I don't know if the staff updated the report after the commission hearing, but it looks like we need to make sure that condition two A was struck and clarify if condition number 10 was already modified by staff or if that also needs to be addressed.
Mr. Mayor, I, I see two As being struck. And item 10, it does have the addition, the applicant shall coordinate with the parks to determine if the existing bridge can be used as a pedestrian crossing. So.
Mr. Mayor.
That's my pro.
Thank you, Council President Hoagland. Also, staff requested that there be a provision in the DA regarding the construction traffic signs. Does that need to be added as an additional condition?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pro, it's already in there.
All right. Question's been called. Quick, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Overton.
Jay.
Pro.
Hi.
Cavanagh. Hoagland.
Hi.
Our eyes, zero A's, motion is agreed to, and the item is approved. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Council Cavanagh, anything on our future meeting topics? That's the counter.
Be great if you and the council president can work to find a future workshop date for a presentation from staff on.
Julie noted, anything else on our future meeting topics?
A workshop presentation on Pete, my mics is, I've got the.
P U D's. He.
Peter, you as an uncle, D as in David.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
We're not done yet. I move, we move, go into executive session for Idaho code 74-206D.
Motion saying go into executive session, is there any discussion? If not, quick, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Overton.
Yes.
Pro.
Hi.
Cavanagh. Hoagland.
Hi.
All eyes, motion carries, we'll go into executive session.